Yes, thank you. I move that the council find that the premature general public knowledge of legal advice and information concerning the details of pending and/or potential litigation to which the city is a party or has a stated interest would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you, Councilor McKnight. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Councilor Broderick. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Councilor McKnight, could I turn to you for a motion on motion two?
Yes. Based upon that finding, I move that the council go into executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications, 1 VSA 313 A1F, in a pending civil litigation matter, 1 VSA 313 A1E, including representatives from the mayor's office, the city's attorney's office, and outside legal counsel. Anyone else that needs to be included in that?
No. All right. Thank you, City Attorney Brown. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Councilor Broderick. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So the council is now in executive session. We will be down in the Busher Conference Room. We have a public forum set for a time certain of 6:30 PM. We had originally hoped to be down in executive session about 10 minutes ago. We will strive to return here as close to 6:30 as possible. Thank you very much. All right. I greatly appreciate the patience of folks here at City Hall. That executive session took a bit longer than expected but was important for the council to attend to. As the council takes their seat, just in the interest of time, I do want to go ahead and open up public forum. It is now 6:52 PM. I will give an abbreviated introduction here, which is, we will begin public forum with Burlington residents here in City Hall. We will then turn online to any Burlington residents online. We'll then come back to City Hall and hear from our non-Burlington residents. There is a public hearing scheduled later in the meeting on performing arts centers. I see two people here. I will note to those two individuals here that because of the work sessions and other items, it is unlikely that we will get to the performing arts public hearing until probably more than an hour from now. So you're certainly welcome to stay, to be heard at that point in time. But I'll also come to you last as we go through this process because if you want to use this opportunity rather than, you know, waiting an hour, hour and a half until we get to that public hearing, I just don't want you waiting that long. So we'll give you that option. But if you take the option now in public forum, you will be limited to two minutes, which is our rule for everyone else in the public hearing on the performing arts centers in the South End. There's a bit more flexibility on time. When you're here in City Hall, please come forward and take a seat here at the table. You'll want to hit the push button on the microphone and make sure the light is illuminated green. If you're online, then we will allow you to speak on Zoom, and there will be a timer on Zoom for you to follow. When you're providing public comment, we certainly welcome a diversity of opinions, but we ask that you please refrain from any individualized attacks. We certainly ask that you please not reference or attack or harass anyone based on any protected characteristic. We also ask that you please not raise your voice or use any obscenities. It's important that City Hall remain a safe space for those who serve and those who are here in attendance. If at any time I interrupt a speaker, it will be to ask that they please restart in accordance with these rules. If someone continues to act in violation of these rules, I reserve the right at that point in time to end public comment. So with that, as mentioned, we'll begin with the Burlington residents here in City Hall. The first Burlington resident we have signed up is Theo Wieland, who will be followed by Clayton Dykstra. I will mention that I think a number of public forum cards were, they're usually numbered, sort of one, two, three, four, five, six. I think a number may have been taken for others to fill out. So the first one that I have is four. If anyone has any forms that they need to submit, please bring them to the clerks so that we can make sure to get them in the queue. But again, the first is Theo Wieland, who will be followed by Clayton Dykstra.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Theo.
Yeah, recycling is a scam promoted by fossil fuel billionaires as a way to trick us into thinking their crimes for profit are our personal responsibility to clean up. It's futile, and it has failed us, workers. But it's been a smashing success for the rich who private jet around the world while the sixth extinction accelerates. A paper published in Nature Medicine in February found that human brain samples from 2024 had nearly 50% more microplastics than brain samples from 2016. The solution to the crimes of capitalism is world socialism that plans a circular economy. We workers already have the know-how to pull off this just transition, but we are obstructed by the rich and their two parties, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. A similar problem confronted the abolitionists of the 1850s. Their relentless organizing and effective maneuvering relegated the Whigs to the dustbin of history. Our key in our time to breaking through the tyranny of the billionaires' duopoly is the revitalization of the labor movement. The labor movement has been shrinking in this country for 50 years, and the defeat of PACO still inflicts a timidity that breeds yet more defeats. So I find it frustrating. The grievances of the rank-and-file ask-me-hollers have fallen on deaf ears for years. And it's my hope that this council and this mayor will find a way to meet the needs of the rank-and-file hollers while at the same time stopping the erosion of these good union jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Clayton Dykstra, to be followed by Brett Yates.
Hi there. Clayton Dykstra, Ward Seven, here to talk about municipal recycling.
I think it might have been turned off. Sorry. Is the microphone on?
Testing. Okay, good. Thank you. Clayton Dykstra, Ward Seven, here to talk about municipal recycling. I want to start with a quote. Current collection of residential trash recycling and compost in the city of Burlington is fragmented, inefficient, and costly. Through our consultant study and our own in-house evaluation, we are confident that a fully consolidated collection system will improve convenience, reduce environmental and community impacts, and save residents money. End quote. That is Chapin Spencer, July 2021. Some historical context about municipal recycling here. In the city, it began in 1989, and we've since conducted consolidation studies in 2000, 2009, 2018, and in 2021, which is where I quoted Chapin Spencer telling residents. These are not free studies. One cost over $100,000. These studies consistently showed that consolidation would save residents money, make pickups more efficient, and reduce wear and tear in our streets. But each time, the haulers voiced opposition, and the city listened to them at the expense of Burlington residents. And now the mayor wishes to sell us this idea that cutting recycling is in our best interest. I understand that the mayor and council need to make hard decisions to put the city on a trajectory toward affordability. And I'm not here to offer you a politically agreeable solution because you aren't being transparent about what is really going on behind the scenes. But I do know that municipal recycling is a public good, and it's incompatible with the profit-motivated private companies. I do know that recycling remains an important piece of our waste management infrastructure. I do know that leaving recycling optional is a luxury that expired decades ago. I do know that we're living in a climate-environmental crisis, and we all know the recycling rates are going to drop the second you make this change. We need to decide if we want a waste pickup that's motivated by service or by profits, and we need to decide if we want a city to serve the interests of its residents or the interests of profit-seeking corporations. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Our next speaker is Brett Yates, who will be followed by Michelle Sagelczuk.
Hi. I'm here to speak out again against recycling privatization. The city's plan seems to have shifted somewhat since the last council meeting, but it's still a bad plan. DPW is now asking to use tax dollars to contract one or two private haulers to collect recycling. Because the updated proposal doesn't shift the cost of recycling onto individual households through subscription fees, the likely budgetary savings have shrunk to almost nothing at all. So the only remaining immediate-term rationale for privatization is to make life easier for DPW by reducing its responsibilities. This is not a good argument. Of course, it's always easier to not do something than it is to do something. But Burlingtonians deserve a competent city government that is capable of providing basic services. Do not let the administration tell you that it's simply too much of a headache to address the challenges of providing those services directly. Those challenges inevitably include recruitment and employee morale. Under privatization, they become someone else's problem. Workers will continue to suffer stress and injury manning short-staffed trucks, and none of us will hear about it. Privatization removes the question of working conditions from our democratic control. When a public-sector job is intolerable, the only real solution, if we care, is to make the job better, not to make ourselves feel better by making the suffering invisible. The secondary rationale for privatization seems to be that it offers a potential path toward consolidating waste collection in each neighborhood through a franchise model. We could realize even greater efficiencies by municipalizing trash and compost instead, but the administration will tell you that we don't have the available resources at the moment to achieve consolidation through expanded DPW operations. But crucially, neither do we have the immediate ability to achieve consolidation within the private sector. All we get out of the city's proposal today is privatization. Consolidation is just a shaky promise for the future. Do not give away our recycling service on the basis of that shaky promise. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brett. Our next speaker is Michelle Sagelczuk, who will be followed by Gretchen Schissel.
Hi. I'm Michelle Sagelczuk, resident of Ward Six. I'm here to ask City Council for some clarity and transparency around the proposals to cut recycling services. Initially, we were told in a sort of one-line note in a PowerPoint that the concern here was a budgetary one and that we needed to potentially consider cutting recycling services, municipal recycling services, for a savings of $200,000, which is a real slap-in-the-face suggestion. Now, the proposal has shifted to suggest that actually, public services would be privatized and shifted with city funding to shift that privatization for even less of a saving, city savings of general funds. And again, now that that savings has shrunk, it's suggested that it's actually about the jobs and the condition of the workers that are doing recycling pickup. And it's really concerning that our current proposal is just to move that into the private sector. The jobs will be the jobs. In fact, the private sector has a much worse track record of treating employees. I'm a teacher at Burlington High School. I understand the difference between working for the public sector versus working in a private school. Private school jobs are often, you know, treated worse. You don't have contractual protections. You're not unionized. And the importance of having a union means that you keep those positions and fight to make them better. So if it has been a concern of DPW that these jobs have not been treated well, that's a real shame on this administration and previous ones, and that is the issue that needs to be addressed. Those jobs will not get better by privatizing them. And public means that there's public accountability. We here need to be able to treat those employees better. We would have no say over how that is happening in the private sector. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gretchen Schissel, who will be followed by Suzanne Sugar.
Hi. I'm Gretchen Schissel, Ward Five. I'm here tonight to voice support for public recycling and to urge City Councils to protect this service. It comes as a surprise to me that cutting this public resource, which is crucial to the health of our community and environment, was proposed by our city leadership. While it's my understanding that there are inefficiencies in the system and that DPW workers are spread thin, I ask you why is privatizing the default solution? I encourage City Council and DPW to think creatively alongside workers to figure out a solution that keeps recycling public while offering fair working conditions and protecting municipal union jobs. Privatizing will forfeit city control and risks price surges within a privately-owned market that will ultimately impact already economically disadvantaged neighbors. This is an opportunity to optimize waste collection services and potential for new revenue streams, all while standing by values of sustainability and community. I hope the City Council will share in this vision. Thanks.
Thank you, Gretchen. Our next speaker is Suzanne Sugar, who will be followed by Ed Baker.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Sugar, Ward Six. I'm here to mix it up and not talk about recycling, but about the injection site that is also on the agenda for this evening. I did a lot of research on this, and I shared it actually with Councilors McKnight and Singh about this particular issue. Alberta Canada did a massive study, 194 pages. I read all of them. You only need to get to page three, the executive summary, to see how an injection site is going to increase public use of drugs in Burlington. And while no deaths were reported at the site specifically, they're actually showing an increase in deaths nearby, which is alarming. I went to the Ward Four and Seven combined meeting before Town Meeting Day to hear the Vermont Criminal Justice Reform Group talk about this issue, and I was deeply troubled by the way they presented this information to the public. They're indicating that there is a decrease in crime around these injection sites. And if you actually go to the source of that information, it contradicts that by telling you specifically that the police in those areas are told to stand down. Of course, that makes sense. You want people to feel comfortable coming to the site. But to use that as a way to justify that this is a good thing for our community felt deeply misleading. Burlington businesses are hit hard by this construction, and it's very clear from the Vancouver study, which I also read, that businesses did not show this to be a favorable decision for the city of Vancouver. This is sold often as a pathway to recovery. Less than 1% of people actually end up in recovery who come to these sites. We have no place further more in Vermont to send folks who even do raise their hand. I think that's also very troubling. In terms of funding, we're looking at potentially spending $1 million. The Massachusetts General Study shows that these cost, on average, $1.8 million a year. So I find this to be deeply troubling as well, that it's going to be underfunded, and that will be left on the taxpayers to handle.
Thank you. Ed, I'm just seeing the note here that you maybe wanted to go towards the end. You're, sorry, not you, Suzanne. I see. Ed, do you want to go now, or do you want to go later? Okay, thank you. So our next speaker will be Ed Baker, who will be followed by Jack Tiano.
All right. I think the microphone might have turned off, Ed. I'm sorry. Your microphone might have turned off. Not that light. It's the light on the microphone itself. Did I do that? Well, anyway, hi, and thank you. I'm Ed Baker. I'm a person with lived experience of addiction, and I'm a person with lived experience of recovery. I'm here this evening simply to underscore, to underline, to emphasize the profound importance and meaning of this evening's working group with the Vermont Criminal Justice Reform. I've had the privilege of getting to know a number of parents in Vermont who have lost children to overdose. If you get to know a parent who has lost a child or a family member to overdose by talking to them, you will inevitably hug them. And if you hug them, your heart will beat like it's never beat before, and you'll never forget the experience. You will experience what it's like to have the deepest grief imaginable at the loss of a child to drug overdose. We in Vermont are, this moment tonight is pivotal. It's historic. The pieces of the mosaic are in place. The legislature has passed. It's law. The pieces are moving. The Health Department has developed guidelines. PCGR is stepping forward. The population in Vermont, most at risk for death by drug overdose, is willing to utilize the site. We have money. We have enough money that's been given to us through the courage of TJ Donovan and his group, the Sackler family, the pharmaceutical manufacturers, distributors. We have the funds for this. The research is abundant. The research is overwhelming. It's unequivocal. These places work in very many ways.
Thank you, Ed. Our next speaker is Jack Tiano, who will be followed by Steve Goodkind.
Good evening. My name is Jack Tiano. I live in Ward Five. I am once again here to express my disappointment for a transportation planning project, this time the Battery Street scoping study. I tried to sit down earlier and distill my concern into a two-minute speech, but it was so frustrating to read through the final scoping study that I just kind of gave up, and I'm going to wing it. So I guess, to be clear, the reason that I think that we keep getting transportation plans that don't work is because the process is broken. I'm not coming to you as someone who, like, read this yesterday and is kind of mad about it and just come in to complain. I go to all of these meetings. I'm on the Walk By Council. I'm on some of the PACs. Like, I'm really engaged in this, and it's really frustrating to watch these processes play out. And I also want to be clear that I don't think this is the fault of our city staff. I don't think this is, you know, a product of negligence or incompetence. It's an issue with the way that we do planning. So like, for example, with this scoping study, there's this data analysis portion where we look at the throughput of car traffic on the corridor. But, and we have that in numbers, right? And you can see how the different alternatives change the travel time down the road. But we don't have quantifiable data of how different alternatives change the connectivity for walking or cycling. We don't have quantitative data for how it changes the streetscape over time. So when we go to assess the alternatives, you know, the only thing that has hard data is car travel speeds, and we always choose the options that do the least, you know, damage to how fast cars can move through. And so this is like a bigger conversation I think we need to have as a city. For like, the city councillor, honestly, you know, this is the last stop. This needs to start kind of with the mayor and the director and the staff, and really work through a new process for this.
Next, Jack. Our next speaker is Steve Goodkind, to be followed by Lee Morgan. It is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. By now, I think, if you weren't familiar with it last year, by now most people are, that Burlington is suffering, to borrow a medical term, I would call long my row. We're left with some fiscal problems that are not just immediate but are going to continue for many years, and it's going to take some hard choices to get out of it. Amongst those choices, we're going to be looking at, I think, almost everything in the city. It's reduction in force, reductions in services.
Steve, I'm sorry. Somehow the mic turned off.
Many things, and I'm not endorsing them, are being looked at. They would include privatization of recycling, eliminating a wastewater treatment plant, consolidating safety services. The list goes on. But there's one thing that I haven't heard a peep about, and I think it's about time. And that is this giant, what I would call, white elephant, the McNeil Generating Facility. Not only is it the dirtiest power plant in this country, but it's a fiscal white elephant. And I think there's more than enough information out there to show this. And if we're going to save money, I think now is the time to look at McNeil and really look and bring it front and center, and not look at everything else and pretend that things are okay there. They aren't. And I think any saving, even though it might not be a tax saving, it might be a ratepayer saving, every saving should be in this mix. It's all coming out of the same pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker is Lee Morgan, who will be followed by our last Burlington resident at the moment, Todd DeLuca.
Hello. My name is Lee Morgan. I live in Ward Three. I'm here tonight to speak in support of overdose prevention centers and express a severe concern. I am very concerned that we have a problem here in this council with something that spans either from misinformation about substance use disorder down to an outright prejudice. How do we know this? It's in the words of the Democratic Council. As many people know, the Democratic group chat was recently made public, and it is 117 pages of very difficult things, many of it prejudice against substance use disorder. Also, what has not been made public yet is I made a public records request pursuant to activities around some Democratic councillors' attitudes around the emergency cold weather shelter at the Miller Center. That returned 247 pages of prejudice, outright prejudice, insults, lies about substance use disorder. I'm concerned, folks, that the majority here has the wrong idea. And then, you know, something else I want to talk about is the Vancouver study. I would please use caution when reading the Vancouver study. There's a reason why people who oppose overdose prevention sites almost exclusively cite the Vancouver study. There's a lot of problems with it, and that's pretty well known. And then I want to take 30 seconds to say, it's also pretty disturbing to hear the discussion of that the value of life when it comes to people with substance use disorder, there's an end to the value of it, and that there's an amount that could be too much. I am worth that money. Ed is worth that money. The people on the streets are worth that money. My friend Hillary would have used an OPC. She was worth it. My love Troy would have used it. He was worth it, too. We're worth it.
Next speaker is Todd DeLuca, and then we will then turn to Burlington residents online. Our first Burlington resident online will be Evan Gould.
Hi, I'm Todd DeLuca, Burlington resident. It's good to see you all. I want to talk about the vacant building ordinance. Buildings are expensive and valuable capital assets. Why would anyone leave a building vacant without good reason? The first step to dealing with vacancy, I think, is to better understand why buildings are vacant and to figure out how to empower owners to overcome obstacles to occupation. This ordinance takes a different approach, increasing punishments until they figure it out on their own. Has the city surveyed owners of vacant buildings? This is important information to know and to share with us before an effective ordinance can be developed and we can trust that it's fair. Regarding graffiti, graffiti is a blight on many vacant buildings owned by the city and private owners. But a broad vacancy ordinance is not needed to handle graffiti. Common law has long allowed graffiti to be handled as a public nuisance. Finally, raising penalties and exempting the city is a double standard. If the city can't adhere to its own standards, why does it think private individuals can and should? Thank you.
Thank you. Our first Burlington resident online is Evan Gould. And if you could just hold on a moment, get our timer up here. And Evan, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Cool. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sweet. I wanted to comment on two things. So one, the public hearing for the performing arts centers. I expressed my support for that zoning amendment prior, but I just wanted to reiterate here. And then also the changes for the new neighborhood types for the neighborhood code. One thing that was striking in that particular memo is the, I think, objective of the neighborhood code to increase development in low density and, or low intensity and medium intensity zones seems to have worked well. But the residential corridors have very low adoption, and so I think it's worthwhile to look at what changes need to be made in order for those to be more valuable in addressing our housing shortage. There's lots of other cities that have done similar ordinance changes. The most success they've had is in those residential corridors. So the fact that ours have had the least uptake in development opportunity, I think, is worth looking into. Secondly, I wanted to talk about recycling and the changes to that. I'm actually not opposed to privatization, but I think that only if it's adding additional value through the conglomeration of trash recycling and compost pickup as a single contractor service that's sent out. service that's sent out. So if we're not moving in that direction, then I don't necessarily see the value in shifting from a public service to a private sector for the exact same thing without addressing the issue of multiple haulers going through and having very inefficient pickups for the rest of the thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Our last Burlington resident online is Sharon Buscher. And Sharon, you should be able to unmute yourself. You could just give me one moment. Karen, I had you signed up online as well, but I'm assuming you'd like to be here in person? Is that right? Karen, sorry, excuse me. You'd like to be here in person? Okay, great. So Sharon, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself. We'll then turn back to City Hall to non-Burlington residents. And our first non-Burlington resident will be Lorat Codream. Sharon, thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
You're welcome. Good evening. I wanted to raise a topic that is not on your agenda tonight, but was on the previous council's agenda. You had a work session on impact fees. And I'm hoping that the council, I think it was one of three work sessions that you held one night. So I, you know, it was a lot of information for all of you and the public to absorb. But I, I really would like you to take a closer look at impact fees because what is currently collected, what is proposed are very different. And one of the things, one of the slides showed that in surrounding communities, five out of seven of those communities collect impact fees on parks. And we're not proposing that. And when Ashley Parker came or, and Charles Dillard spoke about impact fees at the Ward One NPA, he mentioned, it was mentioned that in the South End Innovation District, in the total time, I believe, and so it's going to take many years for that to be fully developed. But the impact fees proposed for parks could reach over $2 million. And so I'd really like the council to explore that and understand why we might leave those dollars on the table. Those seem to be significant. And those could go to upgrade Callahan for all the new participants in our park system. So thank you so much for listening. And I'm hoping that you will give this careful review before adopting the proposed new impact fee schedule. Bye.
Thank you very much, Sharon. So that's our last online speaker. We'll now return here to City Hall to non-Burlington residents in person. And our first non-Burlington resident is Lorat Codream, who will be followed by Rich Tebow.
I don't know if it's working. Thank you for having us here tonight. I want to offer you a slice of my life as part of the recycling. I signed up to work for the street department 25 years ago to clean the streets and take care of them and plow the snow and everything else. And most of the time, we end up on recycling. Why this is a problem? From November 1st to April 15th, we cannot take vacations because we have to be dedicated to clean snow. I'm going to clean snow. I start working at 10 o'clock at night or 9 o'clock at night. I work until 7 o'clock in the morning. And I'm waiting to shower and just curl up in the bed. No, you have to go on recycling until 3 o'clock. And then come back at 3 o'clock in the morning again and start over again because you have to remove snow and all sorts of other things. This is not a life. This is, this is a torture. And then beside that, whatever you have left of your life in the summertime, you're going to do remodeling in the house or, or take vacations or have surgeries or everything else. So half of us in the summer, we have to take our vacation and do our chores beside the recycling. So that's why none of the young guys, they want to stay with us because they go home and they're just a corpse. Their wife is, they don't even recognize their husband. They curl up on the bed and they're dead for the rest of the day. Not to mention, there's no activities, nothing. So it's not that we don't want to do the recycling. Last week, we lost three guys. They just don't want to be part of a life like that. I did it for 25 years because I'm mentally programmed for that, I guess. I don't know. But not everybody is. So thank you for listening to me. And I would like to ask all the city councillors, come and see how we work. Jump in a truck on recycling, drunk with me on a plow truck and everything else. Don't be strangers. We're friends over here.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Yes, and thank you for your years of service to the city. Our next speaker is Rich Tebow, who will be followed by Karen Seda.
I don't know what to say. One thing that I don't hear is construction. We do nothing but recycle. We're supposed to have like 16 people and like Lawrence said, three quit. We have vacations. We have injuries. We have babies being made. They're gone for months. And nobody mentions nothing about the infrastructure, sidewalks, catch basins, stormlines. That's what we got hired to fix. And everybody's upset because they're not getting fixed. What do we do? You know? Because we have to recycle. But my concern is the infrastructure. That's what we need to fix. Because they talk about private contractors making money recycling. Well, if we're recycling, you know how much it's going to cost getting a private contractor to do sidewalks, to do the stormlines? A lot. That's it.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, you too, for your service for the city. Our last non-Burlington resident is Karen Seda.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Before I begin, I would like to show this. You guys don't know what it is. It is all, excuse me, not my time, I'm just showing. This is all the Supreme Court justices in Vermont, okay? Addressing me, speaking to me. All right. Now you can start. By the way, hi Judge Crawford. Hi Judge Hor. See, let me tell you about the judges. The threesome that I have with the judges is based off the love and the lovers that we are to the justice system, to the U.S. Constitution, and to the fact that we believe in the rule of law. Women are in space today. Today is a historic day to be a woman. And that's why I'm here to speak on behalf of my constituents, which are the ultra beautiful, highly pretty, women who suffer, women who, without a doubt, do not fight, but will fight in a court of law for their right to be treated like everybody else. Lopez versus the District of Columbia, which is an iconic case. Because it seems like the courts are willing to hear men go to them and say, hey, we have a legal claim of appearance-based discrimination. We are being treated differently as men because we're too feminine and too feminine-looking. But when a woman makes the same legal claims, that she is being treated differently because she is feminine and she looks feminine, the courts, especially this Vermont judiciary, has no tolerance for that. Do we understand that women today are in space? Susie Wiles is the Chief of Staff to the President of the United States. Women are in spaces that they have never been their entire lives. We are not afraid anymore. And I want to tell all my constituents, all my beautiful women who feel like, why is it every time I want to advance my beauty, life gets harder? I want you to remind you that God, the God of beauty, who creates all things that are beautiful, pays attention to his beauties, no matter how much the homely attack you, no matter how much they make you feel like there's something wrong with you because you want to be a woman, look like a woman, sound like a woman. Don't let them. We will overcome. Again, this is all of the Supreme Court justices, and I just submitted oral arguments which will be happening, okay? All of them are writing to me. We are fighting in the Supreme Court.
Thank you. So that was the last speaker we had signed up for public forum. We do have two individuals who signed up in advance for our public hearing on Performing Arts Centers, Fran Rathke and Ingrid Pels. Fran and Ingrid were probably about an hour away from getting to that public hearing. Do you want to go now or do you want to wait? Okay. So, and are you two together or?
I'm actually in a meeting.
Okay. So Fran, we'll take your comment now. If there's anyone else here for the public hearing on Performing Arts Centers, I'll turn to you in a moment to see if you want to use this opportunity now. Fran, yes? Or you're?
A brief comment or request on the Section 8.2 to change the size of the Performing Arts Center that could happen on Pine Street. We would appreciate, on behalf of the Flynn, that we could participate with city council and others in discussing the future of a project like that or the change in ordinance, just so we're, you know, synced up and part of the discussion. So far, we haven't been. So we just would like, would appreciate having some input and a voice.
Okay. Great. Thank you for being here, Fran, and you as well, Ingrid. Is there anyone else who was here for the public hearing on Performing Arts Centers in the South End? Certainly, we can wait until later in the hearing, but I just, I wanted in transparency to let you know that we're probably about an hour away from that. And if folks wanted to speak to it now, I'd give you the opportunity to do so. Is there anyone online? Again, you can wait until that public hearing, but would like to give you the opportunity now. You could use the raise hand function. Okay. So then we'll go ahead and close public forum now at 7:31 PM. And again, if anyone else tunes in later, we will open that public hearing again on the Performing Arts Centers. And we'll turn now to Item 4 on our agenda, which is we have two work sessions that are planned. One, Item 4.1 on Burlington Overdose Prevention Center update. And then 4.2, update on FY '26 recycling on Item 4.1, Burlington Overdose Prevention Center update. Mayor, should I turn the floor to you first? I know we have some guests here, but happy to have you introduce.
And thank you for helping folks get to the table. And as we have folks join me at the big table here, I just want to start with some opening remarks on this work session and to welcome both the new councillors to the table. We're going to, I'm going to write a little bit of context since some folks are new to this discussion. So back in 2023, Act 178 was authorized by the Vermont Legislature to create the overdose prevention centers in Vermont. And Burlington was selected as the pilot location in the state and appropriated funding. Under that same act, the city is charged with developing its this proposal for implementation. And it must be approved by the legislative body locally, which is, of course, the city council here in Burlington, before we submit the next step to the Department of Health at the state level. Tonight's presentation, which will be a joint effort by our city staff and our partners, is another milestone in this effort to bring this life-saving intervention online here in the city. And this is also an opportunity for you as councillors to ask questions before action is taken, which we hope will be the next council meeting on April 28th. I've been very grateful to have Special Assistant Teresa Vazina, who is in the stripes there. And we are glad that your, glad that your surgery went well and that glad you could be here tonight. She's very dedicated to this work, clearly. But we're so glad we brought her on in the mayor's office a few months ago now. And she's leading this effort on behalf of the city. And now we have the support and partnership of the Vermont Civil Justice Reform in developing the proposal. I announced a couple of meetings ago that we selected them through a, an RFQ process. RFQ? RF? Anyway, moving on. Yes, we selected them. Anyway, so we're grateful. I also just want to note, in the packet tonight, you have, and you will be getting a letter from former mayor Murrow Weinberger, but you have one in your packet from former city council president Karen Paul. This is just a couple of the expressions of support that have been building for years here in the city of Burlington across multiple city councils and mayors at this point, who have, and they've all played a significant role in advocating for this policy change at the state level. So we're, I really want you to understand, we're sort of passing the baton from prior elected folks locally here forward. And I hope you do read their letters of support because I think it emphasizes how committed, not only committed past elected folks have been, but their, their clear position on this, on this issue. And I just want to emphasize, this, my administration is not only committed, but very, very much passionate about deep community engagement. We've expressed this in multiple issues over this first year. And OPCs are part of that. So the next piece of work that they'll be presenting a little bit on will be about how we continue to engage the community, both through education, talk about site location and selection, but always using data to inform the implementation of this important tool. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa and the VCJR team, which includes Tom, Jess, and Sarah Ashley, who I hope you all introduce each other so people know who's who. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This is on?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, for sharing that. And good evening, city councillors and to the public. My name, as the mayor says, is Teresa Vazina. And I'm really honored to be serving in this role as the Special Assistant to the Overdose Prevention Center Implementation. Before I begin tonight's work session, I really felt it was really important, though, to really highlight and just take a moment to ground us into how we got here. And I know the mayor shared a little bit of that. But I also wanted to just get, kind of give a shout out to the many, many people over the many, many years since 2018. And I myself was on a commission back in 2016 to move this work forward. So this moment that we're at tonight is a result of years of research, community input, tireless advocacy by both people who use drugs, people in the public health professions, harm reduction workers, families who've lost loved ones, and dedicated public servants. I want to extend my deepest thank you to all those who came before me in this work and to the previous council members and community members who were leaders in bringing us to where we are today, to lay this foundation, to provide this life-saving work. The proposal that we'll be presenting tonight is made possible because of the work and advocacy of those folks, but also because of the passage of Act 178. And again, you'll see in that same letter from Karen Paul, the fourth resolution to support H72, as it was before it was Act 178 was passed, with Burlington's commitment to move forward with this project. So tonight, we're going to focus on how we'll move forward with the overdose prevention center in a way that's responsible, collaborative, and in full alignment with the legal and operational framework outlined in Act 178 and through the Vermont Health Department's overdose prevention center operating guidelines. This has been a long-awaited work session. And our task tonight is to walk through the proposal, the compliance plan, and ensure that we, as a city and as a partner to VCJR, are prepared to carry our project forward with care and integrity and the level of collaboration that this is going to require. I want to thank you for your time and attention for our next critical step, which will be the vote. And I want to thank VCJR team and also Johnson Healthcare Center. Caroline and Jeff are here with us as well. And so to sort of go through the framework of what we'll be going through tonight, you all have received in the packet the project proposal, which is more of the narrative-style version of the project, and then the compliance plan. Both of these plans together speak together. And there's 28 pages of operating guidelines. So what I tried to do for you all is note in the compliance plan where each one of the pieces of the puzzle of the project connect to the operating guideline so that you could understand where compliance was going to be taken care of. But VCJR will be here to talk much more about the vision for the project. They submitted an incredible letter of intent proposal, which also is included with your packet. I don't want to do a lot of the talking tonight, but I will help guide us through. And I wanted to take a moment to introduce Jess and Tom and Sass. And I'll let you guys have the mic. Tom.
Are we going to go through the slides or?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jess Kirby. I am the program director at VCJR. And I just wanted to tell you all right now a little bit about why we think VCJR is really uniquely suited and a really good fit for implementing OPC in Burlington. We collectively, our staff, has been implementing harm reduction programs responsibly and successfully in Burlington for many, many years. And we've built really strong relationships with the population of focus. And we've built really strong relationships with the population at Focus over many years. We're very well-known with the population. We've really earned trust and credibility, our staff. The majority of our staff has lived experience. Our board has lived experience. We've been involved in OPCs and studying them and looking into them and really trying to see if we could make this work for Burlington and if this would meet the needs of Burlington and meet the needs of the people who are really struggling the most in Burlington. And we really, you know, over many years, like Teresa was bringing up in 2016, a commission, like, you know, of Sarah George's commission that was first, you know, looking at OPC alongside Burlington. You know, City Council looking at it. We, you know, we were a part of that, Tom and I. And, you know, we have really looked at the research. We've been testifying to the legislature. We've been surveying our clients for many years. You know, we have surveyed people who are most at risk for overdose eight or nine years ago and have recently surveyed people at most at risk for overdose. And over 95% have said that they really feel like we need an OPC and would use one if they, you know, had to use a loan. And the majority of the people that we're working with are in positions where they're having to use a loan or in public settings. 90% of clients at intake are unhoused or insecurely housed. 94% of them have had a history of overdose. And 54% have reported an overdose in the prior six months. So that really tells us that we're working with a really high-risk population and a population that's been asking for this for many years. We feel like this will be a really natural addition to services we're already providing through listening to our clients and their needs and just working really closely on this issue. We know that this is really the next step for helping people stay alive, stay safe, access treatment, have support. And we're really committed to making sure that this works for Burlington. And we want it to be an addition that's helpful to the whole community. So really, yeah. Is that good? Okay.
All right. Go ahead. So Jo is my slide person. And just to kind of share, I know that we've shared a little bit with the council before, but also for folks that are here in the audience, the team that the mayor's office convened to help review the proposals. And we were so grateful and actually quite lucky that VCJR stepped up for this incredible project. It is a big project. And it takes a lot of actually courage to stand up to do this work. It's difficult. So thank you to VCJR for doing that. And we had a wonderful review committee. I just wanted to share this overall review process that we went through. I won't, you know, spend too, too much time on that, but just wanted to also to send a big thank you out to all the folks that worked really hard with us on this. The proposal that VCJR submitted was compelling. It was very compelling. It was a very strong proposal. But not only that, but it also showed that they were able to meet the requirements of Act 178 and the Vermont Health Department, I'll call it VDH from here on out, operating guidelines. This was really important. And so the proposal that we are asking for a vote on is actually a proposal that has been designed to be done in phases. So Phase 1 of the project is really our planning and capacity building phase. We anticipate the first year being heavily focused on the planning and capacity building, which will include the service assessment. And when you're looking through the OPC guidelines, you'll see Section 2B, which is the service assessment section. It's a few pages long, actually. It includes engagement with multiple sectors across the entire city and community. But also, we here at the city have decided to include something that wasn't in the operating guidelines, and that was a neighborhood assessment. So that will be included in addition to the required service assessment. Community engagement in this process was very, very important. We knew how important it would be. And the other big part of the Section 2B is policy development. And these are huge undertakings that require us to, one, have a contract with the state so that the city can then subcontract with VCJR so that they can hire staff, but also so that we can hire external consultants and research groups, as well as technical assistance with Rhode Island, Project Weber Renew, to support the city and VCJR in completing this really important task of planning and capacity building so that we can move forward in a way that is fully in compliance with the guidelines in 178. This will also include looking at site selection. And I know site selection is on everybody's mind. And I wish I could say to you here tonight that we know exactly how that's going to go, what that's going to be, but we don't. But what we do know is that through this planning and capacity building process, we will be able to develop a very solid site acquisition plan. We'll be able to engage the community in a multifaceted strategy that will include a lot of players. And that's going to be really important. So that's sort of Phase 1. And there's many other pieces, but I don't want to spend too much time going to the nitty-gritty since you all have it in the two proposals. Phase 2 would be more of like, once we have Phase 1 completed, we have those operating policies and procedures in place, site selection comes back to the City Council anyway, right? That's going to come back here based on the requirements for the zoning and ordinance. And the big part of Phase 2 is going to be outfitting the space, getting that secured, making sure that all of the pieces are in place that were developed in Phase 1, the policies and procedures and operating guidelines, need to then be executed in order for Phase 2, which would be the actual rollout and being able to provide those overdose prevention services directly to the people who are most in need. We hope to be seeing Phase 2 being rolled out, sort of parts of it in tandem with the planning and capacity building. And then ultimately, maybe by month 18, being able to really have a solid understanding of when the site would open. Today, our goal is to hopefully be able to look through the proposals and see the thought and care that's gone into making sure that they meet the guidelines so that it can be presented to our Health Department so that we can then move forward with Phase 1 with VCJR. I guess I talked a lot about the slides that are coming up. Jo, do you want to? Yeah.
It doesn't matter. So my name is Tom Dalton. I'm Executive Director of Vermont Criminal Justice Reform. And in our letter of intent, some of the key messages that we were trying to get across were that VCJR has been building an important community resource, health resource, for people that are at highest risk of overdose death for the last several years. And we see OPC services as an important new step to take to help increase, to help increase our ability to help prevent overdose death and a whole range of other harms that people are suffering. So currently, at our recovery center that's located at 109 Bank Street, we have co-located harm reduction, medical, drug treatment, and recovery services. And we're, as Jess was talking about, we're already working with many of those that are most likely to access OPC services. And we've already built a strong foundation for successful implementation of OPC services. But as Teresa was talking about, we recognize that we still have more to do. And as our LOI describes, we plan to integrate and contextualize OPC services within the continuum of services that we have been building and that we're going to continue to build. So in other words, what we're hoping to have is a comprehensive health resource for this population that isn't limited to OPC services and maybe isn't even primarily focused on OPC services. We want that integrated into the needs, into fulfilling a broader spectrum of needs that people have in order to be successful. And Teresa was mentioning the suggestion that we use a phased implementation approach. And from our perspective, this will allow us to build additional capacity over time, engage in a thoughtful community input process, engage in a thoughtful process to choose a program site, and importantly for us, demonstrate responsible and effective operation of services at our new site prior to implementing supervised consumption services. So, you know, one of the reasons we feel like our organization is a good fit to partner with the city on this is because we've successfully implemented public health programs with this population. And we are currently implementing them in a responsible way that isn't having a negative impact on the community. And it's important to us, as we move into a new site with the potential for OPC services, that we're able to move into the new site, implement our other services, and demonstrate to the community, the neighbors, and the people that we're working with and other stakeholders, successful implementation at this new site before introducing supervised consumption services. So having this phased approach will allow us to take it in steps. And I think that this will help us be successful. We also, we're hoping to convey the message that we're committed to responsible implementation, committed to creating a resource that benefits the entire community. And I have more to talk about, but I want to know, does this five minutes and 25 seconds include question time?
We'll have time for questions.
Okay. Okay. So foundational to our approach is a recognition that substance use disorders are chronic health conditions that are potentially fatal. For most people, the recovery process takes place over a period of months or years. And so, and during that time, they're going to, in most cases, experience periods where they're actively using and periods where they're abstinent. And so unless you're willing to work with people who are currently using, you're not going to be there to help them transition to recovery. And so our motto is, meet people where they are at, but don't leave them there. We want to help people survive and survive their substance use disorder, but also recover from their substance use disorder. Our staff, for many years, has specialized in supporting people throughout the entire recovery process, from active use through sustained recovery. And when people who are struggling to survive severe substance use disorders succeed, we all benefit. The individual, their children and families, their neighbors and friends, and the entire community. Success requires a willingness to support people in addressing a very broad range of evolving needs over long periods of time. And most programs aren't designed to allow that to happen. Our services are designed to promote sustained engagement over time. We recognize that OPC services are evidence-based, save lives, increase the likelihood of recovery. But we also recognize that they have to be responsibly implemented to be effective and sustainable in the community. And we're committed to responsible and effective implementation.
Sorry, Teresa. Could you move the microphone back to that side of the table? Yeah, no worries.
I was just, I asked Jo to put it back on site selection. I know that we talked just briefly, that we wouldn't be able to, like, we're not identifying a site tonight. But Jess and I had talked a lot in, over our conversations. And I love some of the things that she talked about. And I'd love to pass it to Jess to talk about this good neighbor.
Thanks, Teresa. You know, we just, really, this is something we talk about. We know that many people in the community, you know, have a lot of fears about having, you know, what is seen as a new harm reduction program, a new place that is serving people who use drugs and what that could mean for surrounding areas. And so we really wanted to just take the time to tell you all how important it is to us that we implement responsibly, that we are good neighbors. We are serving over 300 people currently. And we know that we have not had any problems with neighbors. We have not had any issues. We don't see our role and our responsibility as only paying attention to what's going on inside the walls of our office. We absolutely think it's our responsibility to be paying attention to what's going on in our street and what's going on out front and what's going on out back. And we have a lot of experience and success with being good neighbors while implementing programs such as this. You know, I worked in a certain service program for 10 years prior to this. And we had really good success with being good neighbors. And, you know, we don't believe that you just kind of, people walk out the door and it's not your problem anymore. You know, like, anybody that knows me knows that I'll be the first one out there. Like, hey, guys, no, we got to do this. We got to move on. We got to, you know, like, we know that we, when you're serving a lot of people, no matter what, that you need to be really careful and thoughtful about what the impact is on the people around you. And I just wanted to tell, you know, you all that we're really committed to making sure that we continue to be good neighbors wherever we are. 300 people is a lot of people in Burlington. It's a small town, and we're serving that many people now. And we have a really good space. And, you know, we also just really strongly believe that if people really value your services, if they have attachments to the program and attachments to the staff. You know, I'm a person with lived experience. I engage with people from that perspective. People really trust us and value us. And they care when we say like, hey, this can really impact us. Here are the reasons why this matters. And I think, you know, through, you know, between Tom and I and Sarah Ashley, we have decades of experience doing this. And we've been able to do this really well. And, you know, I'm absolutely confident, I know we all are, that we can continue to be good neighbors wherever we are and make sure that we are being really mindful of the impact of those around us. And we're going to be thoughtful about citing, you know, no matter what. And we're going to make sure that it makes sense to the people that are using the site and that it's comfortable for them and that we are making sure that we're implementing responsibly.
I have no idea.
Well, we had, is there anything further in your presentation, or?
I wanted to give Caroline Butler just a moment, if we could, to talk about her role.
Great.
Hi there. My name is Caroline Butler. I'm a nurse practitioner and one of the founding members of the Johnson Health Center. And really, I just, I wanted to express how excited I am to work with VCJR, work together on a project that's been a long time in the making. And also to just say, this really kind of, I've seen over the last two years of working with them what we've been able to do with a small grassroots program and what this potentially holds in terms of growth of services, growth of ways that we can continue to help people. But really, this is the best team. And I have full confidence in all of them.
I think we're okay to end there. And y'all have the other documents, but we're really interested in taking your questions. So I want to make sure we leave plenty of time for that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Teresa, and thank you to VCJR and all the other partners that have gotten us this far. Appreciate the presentation. We did have 25 minutes on this, but it's a very important issue. And I do want to make sure that there's time for questions and comments. Can I get a sense as to councilors that wish to get in the queue on this item? I see Counselor Grant, and then we'll go Carpenter, Newbezer, Litwin. Counselor Grant, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Very excited. I feel this has been, you know, discussed for a very, very long time. I'm a Central District City Councilor, which is Warts 2 and 3. And as you all know, this is the epicenter of... all know, this is the epicenter of the drug crisis, not only in our city, but Chitting County, and dare I say, the state as well, although I know there's some other areas of the state that are really struggling. I will say, I've studied this a lot. When I first became councillor, I went to Comstat meetings, I felt that that was really, probably, the most important meeting that I attended, considering what was happening in our wards, wards two and three, and then moving downtown into other parts of the city. I appreciate the work that you do a great deal. I think there is a lot of fear out there, and I think that we all in the city need to be mindful of decisions that are made from a position of fear, of being afraid of something. We have to make fact-based, data-driven decisions. Sometimes we'll say things like, how will children be affected? We don't have to make anything up about how children might be affected. We can talk about how our children are actually currently being affected, which is that their parents, they're losing their parents, either to overdoses where they don't come back, either from a complete destabilization of the household, parents become justice-involved. We see that. We see what our children see on the street, that's a real thing. We've had children approached by traffickers, that's a real thing. If a child comes into an OPC, into the OPC, we don't have to be afraid of that, because if a child wants to experiment in that way, especially with fentanyl, that's actually a really good place for them to be, with harm reduction experts, who can sit them down and talk to them about their decisions and what's going on in their lives. This idea that children will just be allowed to use drugs is simply not true. So fact-based, data-driven decisions is what we need, and we need to focus on that. I think sometimes other residents in our city aren't fully aware of what's going on downtown. I think that this is going to help in two ways. One, it would reduce the number of people openly using in the street, and that is something that we desperately need. It's really affecting quality of life for people. It happens because of two things. We literally don't have a place for people to go, and we don't have a street crimes unit, so somehow we're going to have to work that out. We have a new police chief that may be coming down the line. If you haven't met him yet, I hope you meet the interim chief, Burke, as soon as you can. We also need to think in terms of, something that was brought up earlier, we make a lot assumptions about people who are marginalized, who suffer from substance use disorder. There is no question that with fentanyl, it is much harder, there's more relapse. But that doesn't mean we give up on people. And, you know, the question about putting a value on people's lives, that's a hard one, that's a hard one, because you never know who's going to be affected. Not all people who suffer from S U D are unhoused. That, that's just a fact, and not all unhoused suffer from S U D. So that's something that we really need to think about. It will also reduce syringe litter, which is a huge complaint downtown. We need to work on that in other ways, but this would be something that would help. And the last thing that I'll mention is the importance of how you'll be able to work with our police and fire departments. Where OPCs are located, they have dramatically reduced the amount of money spent by those departments, because they're no longer responding to the overdoses, which right now is a really big cost to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grant. We'll go to councillor Carpenter, and then councillor Newbezer.
Thanks. This is really interesting, and maybe you'll be getting more, I'm just curious, if you can talk a little bit about, you're talking about site selection, and that will be a huge task, and will be very sensitive. What will you be looking at? What will be important? And just kind of a nautical comment in the sense of, how would that site be maybe better connected with the services we already have? I mean, it's troublesome to me that our only methadone clinic is in South Burlington, and so while we're working on this, it seems all of that might tie in.
I think, so I'll give a little bit, and then I'll let Jess sort of talk from the V C J R point of view. So I think that the neighborhood assessment combined with the service assessment is really where we're going to be able to pull those community stakeholders, the other partners, and even looking outside of the ones that come right off the top of your head, right? But really think outside the box, how can we build something different? How can we, how can we take this opportunity to really collaborate and build out that collaborative model that we all know is required? This is going to take more than a village, right? And so when, I don't think the site location is the end-all, be-all to whether or not collaboration can work. I think the integration of those other service providers can happen, kind of, without the location being the primary reason why that works. But I think that having access, easy access, and also embedded services, we really look at, when we visited the Rhode Island model, and saw that all of their ancillary services were embedded right onsite. People did not have to go to another building, to another place. Each provider had their own space, offices, services offered right there within the same facility, making, you know, we often talk about, I worked in certain service programs for, you know, over a decade, and we'd have to give a referral to somewhere else, and you just have to hope that maybe that, that person, that that would work out for them. And, and, you know, so being able to call and be like, hey, I'm sending someone down the hall, you know, I think that, you're really thinking about what that can look like. It will take time to get to that, to that place, but I think when we think about the vision, long-term, as being a healthcare hub, a community center that has walk-in, drop-in space, as well as those health services, social services, embedded treatment services would be, at the lowest barrier, would be the goal. So wherever that site would be, but thinking about the selection of the site in terms of where it might be, I think that, following the data, the, you know, there is hotspot data, there is overdose data, and so definitely taking that into consideration as well, along with the other assessments that will be conducted. But I'm going to let Jess talk a little bit more on that.
I just want to make sure I knew what you're asking. You were just asking what types of things will be considered in site selection? Is that what you're asking? Good, that was, I just, I couldn't hear you that well, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. You know, so I think we'll learn a lot in the service assessment, and we want to take that really seriously, and really look at what we get from that in terms of planning for site selection. But also, you know, we want to think about and have it be close by where people are having public use. We want to have it be close by where we know people are having many overdoses. We want to have it be close to where we know people who are using drugs and are most at risk often are, and where they're accessing services already, and where they're hanging out already. We would love it to be nearby the bus station, and, you know, in walking distance of the places where people who are most at risk already are. So, you know, we're hoping that it will be, you know, in the core downtown area. I'm really glad that you brought up, you know, issues with methadone access, that is an issue that's really near and dear to my heart, as a person that has used methadone to, you know, through harm reduction, you know, and that's how I got into treatment, was through harm reduction programs. Like so many people who use drugs, those are the programs that people are interacting with when they're using. And so, you know, I, you know, methadone is what really helped me get where I am today, and so I'm very passionate, and our staff in V C J R is very passionate, about helping people be able to better access methadone, and we definitely want to be a part of the solution of how to help people access that better. And, you know, we definitely want the OPC to be a conduit to that, and making sure that people can get there, whether, you know, we have staff helping transport, or, you know, have a secondary location someday, or, you know, but we do know that that's a really important part of the OPC, is making sure that people can access all those different services, and we want to be really closely partnered, and make sure that we can make that as easy as possible. But I think those are a lot of the things that we'll be considering. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. I have councillor Newbezer, and then councillor Litwin. Is there any other councillor that wishes to get in the queue? And then councillor McKnight. Okay. Councillor Newbezer, go ahead.
Well, thank you so much. I had a few questions, and then some quick comments, and I'll try to be brief. Just to walk through, you know, a lot of us, and obviously you folks have been following this closely, could you speak to, because it was raised in public comment, and I've heard it in other places, other discussions on this topic as well, how this site is being funded, the impact on both, the potential impact on both municipal taxpayers, but also state? And I have more.
Joe, if you could move to slide four for project funding summary. So as part of Act 178, $1.1 million is allocated already from fiscal year '25, and we know that in this past session, FY '26 has also been allocated, and that the intention of the General Assembly is to continue this funding through the opioid settlement funds through fiscal year '28. So we know that these first, you know, three years of funding will come from that pot of money. We also know that there is additional money coming through opioid settlement dollars. One of the great things about doing a pilot is that there's a strong component of evaluation and reporting and outcomes. And so we will be able to utilize the data from the first, you know, hopefully two years of operations to support continued funding through the opioid settlement funds. In addition, we already have been strategizing about other ways to get additional funding that does not tax public dollars, that would be more through private foundations and philanthropy. But I'll also let Tom speak to this.
I think you covered most of it, but I would just add that V C J R currently doesn't get any state or federal funding. That's changing for us now. We're about to start a contract with the Vermont Department of Health separate from this. But in general, we've been funded through grants from foundations, and we're going to continue to try to use that, those funding sources to fund a lot of the ancillary services that we're wanting to continue as part of this model. And also, I think what Teresa said about the evaluation component is really important. The legislature provided a separate $300,000 appropriation to fund, you know, academic research level of evaluation for this program, which we're going to fully participate in. So I think that with outcome data, if the program is working and is effective, and we're able to document cost savings and things like that, we think that there will be people willing to continue to invest in it after the pilot's done.
Just because I see time, just a few closing comments. One, I just want to thank you all so much, just hearing your presentation, hearing you talk about this. The level of competence and thoughtfulness and expertise displayed is very clear to me, and I think very clear to our community. Other folks have made points on the council, and I appreciate my colleague councillor Carpenter raising, you know, the question about how you're going to think about citing the location. So I appreciate that. I do just want to hit home for my colleagues on this body and other folks in the community, just the point that the vast, vast majority of voters, of residents across Vermont, from every single political party, majorities of Democrats, majorities of Republicans, majorities of independents, or third-party folks, support OPCs in Vermont. This is an easy, I think the overall number is 84% of Vermonters support OPCs. I've knocked a lot of doors, worked on a lot of political campaigns, 84% of anybody agreeing on anything is a rarity. And so having that clarity that this isn't just the right thing to do, it's not just the cost-effective thing to do, it's not just the best practice thing to do in terms of addressing things like syringe litter, public drug use, getting more folks into recovery, it's the popular thing to do. Like, this is a time when we can both pair good politics, good policy, and really profound impact. So I deeply appreciate you all. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Newbezer. I have councillor Litwin, and then McKnight, and then, and then we'll try to, and then councillor Kane will end with you.
Thanks. And thank you, I always appreciate getting to hear from you all, and I bet we'll get to hear from you all quite a bit for a while. And so I guess I would just echo those thanks. I want to start from a baseline, which is that I support this, and that I'm interested in it being successful. So if any of my questions come off as, please don't read into anything, they're just, it's time to ask the questions. So one of the questions I do have is about funding, which you did just address actually almost entirely for me. I would like, if we're going to have to take a vote at a future meeting, I would appreciate seeing a much more detailed cost sort of runway and breakdown, because that $1.1 million is not going to take us far when we're talking about the scoping studies, the consultancies, and everything that really is necessary to make sure that this goes well. And I appreciate some of that is educated guessing, and some of it is not, but given the federal landscape right now, given that legislators can't obligate other legislators to future funding requests, I would just ask that we, like, what is that first $1.1 million, how far is that going to take us? And then I'd love to hear a little bit more about your Good Neighbor Program initiative, what that could look like, especially for folks who are listening and thinking about, will this be in my neighborhood, which is a question that councillor Grant, I think, addressed well? And kind of, to what degree V C J R would be able to, or would be able to commit to addressing disruptions beyond the four walls of the building, and kind of what commitments you are making or are going to be able to make, to either engage volunteers or staff to have a dedicated role in addressing neighborhood issues as they come up? So that could be like attending NPAs when necessary, that could be having a phone, like a cellphone, for neighbors to text and call when something's going on that seems like there's maybe a connection to folks you're serving, and sort of being proactive with disruptions, or any other behavioral issues that could occur, which are occurring all over our city. It's not like an OPC is going to be any different from anywhere else. And then lastly, I would love to know if you have any plans in engaging volunteers, training them to do things maybe that like that, right? Like the Good Neighbor Program, for example, could be volunteer-centered and volunteer-driven. There are people who are really interested in supporting you. And lastly, Vermont Medical Reserve Corps. I'm just sort of curious if you're, you have or you're able to engage the Medical Reserve Corps in this exciting new venture for our state? And I guess I'm done. That's all my questions for now.
Are you looking for answers now, councillor Litwin, or?
Oh, yes. There's still, there's still time on the clock.
Okay.
Well, I know I can speak to the, at least the first question, which was around the sort of line item budget, and we did do that for the legislature, actually, when we were advocating for the FY '26 funds. So I have, again, it's educative estimates, right, around the project for the first 18 months I've done that. So I can definitely share that with you all. But part of the requirement is that the city and V C J R will actually put together a more solid budget as part of the requirement for the Health Department to start the contract. So that'll be part of, part of that work anyway, but I do have the draft budget, happy to share that. I'll let Jess talk a little bit more about what V C J R I'll let Jess talk a little bit more about what VCJR visions for like a Good Neighbor Program. I can speak from my personal experience at working in syringe service programs across the state and the ways that we were able to build out different volunteer programs that really supported, whether it were going to hotspots to pick up litter or whether it was to just help out with transportation if someone needed a ride. We had, you know, a group where you could reach out and, hey, does anyone go in this way, that way? So I think there are some really great ways to utilize and leverage volunteers. I know that my experience in this work is there are so many people who want to help and don't quite know how they can be a part of the solution. And they're out there and they're just waiting for someone to help them to have some structure around that. So I know I myself would be happy to help VCJR with whatever that looks like for them. I'm sorry, Evan, I can't remember all your other questions, so I'm...
Well, I'm out of time, but...
Yeah, I think I, go ahead and answer the question. I'm just, I'm mindful of the number of counselors that we have here.
I'll just piggyback a little bit on what Teresa was saying about being a good neighbor. One thing that we're definitely planning to do and looking forward to do, to doing, Tom and I both have a lot of experience in implementing syringe service programs. And one of the things that we used to do in Burlington when we were doing that was pick up syringes. We actually used to take like every call in the entire city of Burlington and pick up every syringe that somebody called and, you know, identified was somewhere. And we did that for many years really successfully. And I, you know, we're going to definitely have a lot on our plate in the beginning, but we absolutely, I don't know if it'll be every call, you know, right away, but we definitely plan to be having a presence picking up syringes again in the community. We always found that that was a really good way to educate the public, talk to the public, talk about concerns that are going on, be involved in the community more. People would wait for us and we would go and pick it up and talk to people about it and tell people how to safely dispose it if they wanted to. And if not, they can call us again. But it just gave us a lot of opportunity to talk to people about harm reduction and really show people our investment and, you know, not wanting these things to be happening and, you know, just educate calm fears and misconceptions and all of those things. So we really hope to be doing that again. And, you know, we absolutely will be interested in utilizing volunteers for things, you know, Good Neighbor Program-ish, I coined a term for it already. And, you know, we want this to be a good working part of the community. We would happily come to ward meetings. You know, we've done a lot of just being involved and embedded in the community already in our work and we definitely strongly see how that, you know, should happen in this case for sure. So.
All right, thank you. I have Counselor McKnight and then Counselor Kane. Counselor Barlow, did you want to get in the queue or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And was there anyone else outside? Okay, all right, we'll see. Counselor McKnight, and then I will just say that when we are done with this work session, we will need to turn to our Local Control Commission and Tax Abatement Meetings. Those meetings were warned for 7:00 and 7:30 respectively, and I know we have people here who are, who are waiting for those meetings. So just to prepare for that when we're done with this work session. But Counselor McKnight, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Travers, and thank you all so much for being here. It's just really, I don't know, it sets your mind at ease hearing you all speak about this and I am very supportive of getting this center as opened as soon as we possibly can. I wish we could do it sooner. Just a couple of quick questions for tonight. I really appreciate you tackling the sort of concept of responsible implementation head-on. I think that's going to be really important. And more specifically around site selection, I'm curious for right now more about the process of that. So, and what I would love to see, and I'm just curious off the top of your head if this is a possibility, is maybe like a round one of, you know, like three to five options of sites that we as a council could perhaps give input on or kind of just hear like the pros and cons and, you know, your thought process before we get to a final one? So that's, I guess, more of a request. And totally understand there's a lot of constraints and factors and we're not even there yet with the list of constraints and factors. So just something to keep in mind. And then to build on what actually Counselor Grant and Counselor Litwin mentioned, I'm curious to learn more about how you'll be working in collaboration. And at some point, I would love to see like a real nice, specific plan of action that includes input from the police and fire departments because I think that is one of the most exciting pieces of this, is that our first responders are doing this work out in the street right now. And ideally, this will really ease some of that burden, but there's also a role for them to play, you know, in the area of the site perhaps. So I want to hear more from you on that. And I think that sort of is almost like cyclical, going back to responsible implementation. So just kind of how all that ties together. I think that is it for now. If you want to respond now, that's great, or we can just keep the conversation going.
I think if it's possible, Counselor McKnight, if you're okay with it, if we could turn to other counselors, and I know this will be an ongoing dialogue between us and your team. Great. So thank you. Counselor Kane.
Thank you. And I'll be brief as well. I'm hoping Counselor Barlow and Bergman can also speak and I won't require a response tonight. But I do just, I do just want to flag for the public that I have been impressed with VCJR. I haven't heard any quality of life concerns from neighbors. The Good Neighbor anecdotes, at least, that you gave, you know, are encouraging. I'd also like to better understand, and we can do this in continued conversation, you know, what it is that gets you, that gets you there, that is not getting some other social service providers there. I do hear Good Neighbor concerns related to, you know, the needle exchange to the Elmwood pods, feeding Champlain Valley to Cots, the day station. And, you know, I am wondering, you know, what is it about staffing ratios, you know, relative to clients or, you know, going beyond anecdotes and kind of rolling up our sleeves a bit? Because I think VCJR might be able to, you know, be helpful for other social service providers that do exist in the city. And I think my message just to the public is that, yeah, I certainly believe in VCJR and thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kane. We'll go to Counselor Barlow and then Counselor Bergman will try to end with you.
And thank you again for your, for your presentation tonight and for the work you're doing. I am supportive of this conceptually, but as you noted, many of us are concerned about the citing decisions. And I do, I just reflect on like the deciding decision for the Elmwood Pod Shelter community. The city sort of decided on that location. It was approved, then they did the outreach to the neighborhood. And there was, there were a lot of, lot of issues there. And those issues, a lot of them have been addressed, but there were neighbors who came to us who had documented, one of the law firms that's adjacent to the Pod Shelter community, came with a detailed list of over 100 incidents that they had had. Told us how they were having problems with clients visiting, employees coming to work, the need to spend over $50,000 on security upgrades and landscaping changes to their, because they had, it wasn't that the, within the four walls of the Pod Shelter community, things were running fine. It was the surrounding neighborhood that was impacted adversely. And given the constraints we have about public safety resources right now, we didn't have people to attend to those. It got worked out over time and I think a lot of that has subsided, but the thing that was most notable to me was just the process by which it got sort of placed in that neighborhood. And so I'm hopeful that we can be engaging on the, before a decision is made with the neighborhoods and educating them and using some of the feedback that they have to make our decision. I also am concerned, I mean Burlington's a very small geography. And so we have like our downtown business district for which we depend on the economic vitality of the city, and it certainly has suffered in recent years. I think everybody would agree to that. But we have services, social services here, now we have shelter services here, and we'll have overdose prevention services potentially here as well. I think those are, there's, there's conflicts of use, or conflicts in our goals sometimes. We say people have to be okay with it, they have to get used to it, but diners, shoppers, visitors, they can devote with their feet. They can shop in Williston, they can visit other cities. And so we just have to be really mindful of that. I'm hoping we'll also engage or think big picture about like the business community and any potential site selection has on some of the objectives we have about economic vitality in this city. So I don't really have a question, but that's sort of what's in my head when, as we move into this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Counselor Bergman, before turning to you, Counselor Newbezer was just hoping to make a very brief correction to something that he'd stated earlier, and then we'll turn to you, Counselor Bergman.
I got ahead of myself and more hopeful perhaps, but I messed up my percentage stat on my yellow pad of doodles here. It's 59% of Vermonters support OPCs. Just for accuracy's sake, want to make sure I corrected myself. Thank you, Counselor President.
Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. And Counselor Bergman, we'll go to you last.
Thanks. And I told him he could wait to deal with that, but it's good to get it out on the floor early.
I didn't want to end with that, Counselor Bergman. I want to end with you.
There you go. And I'll try to be really positive because I hear the concerns about citing, and I have to say that your proposal and your presentation really address those. And as long as we adhere to the documents that you've put forward and the statements that you've done, I feel very confident. I'm particularly looking at the guidelines compliance and I, that document. And I think that, you know, at the end of the day, this has got to, as you said, got to be close to where the activity is. And that activity is multifaceted. And, you know, we're going to need to do that. And I look at that document and I look at the, on the service, the neighborhood assessment and the stakeholder and community assessment on page two. And, you know, people say, oh, I hope you, you know, like contact, you know, the police and work with law enforcement and fire department. It's right there. So if we look at, you know, like, community concerns, potential for, potential site locations, I mean, this is a very impressive proposal. And I wasn't going to speak, but I feel sort of compelled to point out that the devil that's in the details is actually in your report. So, you know, we're going to be looking forward to you, if you don't hear anything that would cause you to change this draft, because this is just a draft and you're looking for feedback, you know, as we walk down, as Counselor Litwin said, we will need to be seeing you down the line. And so the statistics that are related to the activity, to the number of overdoses, to the services that are provided, to the impacts that may happen, all those metrics will be very helpful, as Counselor Grant was saying, in terms of being data and fact-driven, will be helpful and essential for us and for our community. And then just to go back down there, I had it, it was up here probably. There, in terms of the other issues, there was one on management here. Well, it was there. I know, I'm getting tired. All of those details, I really look forward and I have, based on this comprehensive presentation, including the documents that you didn't kind of go through, that we'll be able to do that. And at the end of the day, I go back to what Ed Baker said, it's about the people. And it's about, as Counselor Grant said, not just those individuals, but all of their friends and their families and the people that are connected and the greater community. So thank you very, very much. I look forward to taking this up on the 28th.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. I echo your thanks to the team here. I don't know if you have any sort of last comments or thoughts here, but I know this is the first of many meetings to come.
As I was going to say, I just want to say thank you so, so much and we do look forward to walking this path alongside, alongside you all together. Thank you.
Well, thanks again, Teresa, and thank you to our partners at VCJR and other community stakeholders, and we'll look forward to seeing you later this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as mentioned, before turning to our second work session, we do need to turn to our sitting as the Local Control Commission and Board of Tax Abatement. So I will briefly recess the City Council at 8:35 PM and call to order our meeting as the Local Control Commission at 8:35 PM. And for a motion on the agenda, may I turn to Commissioner Broderick?
Thank you. I would move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Broderick. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Commissioner Broderick, may I turn to you for a motion on our consent agenda?
Yes, I move to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Litwin. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously. We have four deliberative items on the agenda. For the first, 3.1, Commissioner Broderick, do you have a motion on that?
I would move to approve the 2025-2026 first and third-class liquor license applications for Citizen Cider, 180 Flynn Avenue with the following conditions, contingent upon fire marshal approval, all city permits need to be closed out and with all standard conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Litwin. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Commissioner Broderick, may I turn to you for item 3.2?
I would move to approve the 2025-2026 outside consumption permit application for Citizen Cider, 180 Flynn Avenue with the following condition, all city permits need to be closed out.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Litwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Item 3.3, please, Commissioner Broderick.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 first and second-class liquor license applications for La Reprise Wines, 388 Pine Street with the following conditions, contingent upon fire marshal approval and with all standard conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Litwin. Any discussion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. And our last deliberative item, item 3.4, Commissioner Broderick.
I would move to approve the 2025-2026 outside consumption permit application for La Reprise Wines, 388 Pine Street.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Litwin. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Broderick. Seeing no other business before the Local Control Commission, we will adjourn that meeting at 8:38 PM. And we will now convene the Board of Tax Abatement, or the full Board of Tax Abatement, at 8:38 PM. And, Mayor, I know you're on this board. We'll have to follow the city attorney.
I'm on this board and I'll be this board.
You're on the board. I'll have to figure out if you're the chair of the board, but we'll make you the chair tonight.
Oh, I thought I was the chair.
Okay.
I'm going to be the chair tonight.
Your chair tonight.
Yeah, it's on my shortlist of when the mayor's on and mayor runs it. So we're going to do it that way, right city attorney tonight. Okay, great. All right. Joe Turner, do you want to come up for any reason?
Sure. I'm the fourth.
You did come. So Joe Turner, of course, is our city assessor. That's for the benefit of our new counselors tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and call to order the full Board of Tax Abatement for the city of Burlington, April 14th, 2025, at 8:38 PM. Our first agenda is the agenda. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Grant. Any discussion on the agenda before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Any discussion on the consent agenda before we vote on this item? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. And there is no deliberative item on this agenda, so at a record pace, 8:39 PM. And thank you for being here tonight, Joe. I will adjourn the board, the full Board of Tax Abatement for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our city assessor Turner for being here this evening, and thanks as well to our... and thanks as well to our Tax Abatement Committee for their work on these items. We can now resume the City Council meeting at 8:40 PM, and we'll turn to our second work session, which is on FY26 budgeting for recycling. And on this item, I know we have DPW Director Spencer. And if good by you, Mayor, I'll turn to Director Spencer. Would you like to kick us off?
I'm going to kick it off, I believe. Yes, thank you, Chapin. Okay. So just want to begin by saying that since we presented this initial idea amongst a lot of ideas within the budget presentation at the last deliberative council meeting, we did some reflection. We also made sure that we did some more due diligence of engaging many different stakeholders. That includes several city councilors, ASME leadership, the street maintenance in particular employees, some of which you heard from tonight. I just want to appreciate the president of ASME is here tonight. Colby, I really appreciate his partnership in this as we try to get really to the core elements. I myself, as a mayor, really reflected on we could have presented the information in a lot more context and information. These work sessions are timed. There's a lot of limitations. We were discussing the big picture of fiscal year '26 and trying to convey all the different ideas that the 18 different departments are putting forward. But recycling is more complicated. It is not just about any particular line item cost savings. There's a lot that goes into the context of this particular proposal that has been considered in times past here in the city. We, tonight, are bringing forward a much more detailed presentation to give you that larger context and understanding and to the public in general. It includes some recommendations that are more specific, as well as being responsive to the feedback we've heard so far. We're also preparing two public forums on this to get additional input from the DPW Commission, as well as the public who wants to go more depth than a City Council meeting here. And I want folks to understand, we're truly trying to balance multiple competing needs here, balancing the needs of the workers who do this work and do this very physically intensive labor work, making sure we're keeping those folks front of mind, but also the financial realities facing the city. We're in a tough period of time now where we must look at what our core service is, where is the best place for us to spend our resources, and in the context of the entire ecosystem of the city itself. Nothing is in isolation in the city, and it is important that we look at things collectively and understand what we're advancing and what we're not advancing going forward, because everything is intertwined here. And then the last piece of here, of course, the service to residents and understanding, you heard a little bit in public comment, the ongoing challenges of delivering this reliable service and the ongoing challenges of hiring staff and retaining staff. And it is not for lack of trying, I just want to really commend staff who've been doing this hard work on the front lines, and of course, folks trying to hire and support the folks doing this important work. And before I pass it over, I just will end by saying, we do have budgetary timelines to keep in mind as we barrel towards July 1, and you need to make some critical decisions of what might be happening or not in the next fiscal year. And actually, my really last point on this is I really want to be clear for the public. I take this very seriously. I myself spent many years in the labor movement protecting public jobs, and I'm always bringing that lens to this around protection of public jobs, but also protection of the people and listening to the people who are delivering the work. That is just as important. So I'll pass it over to DPW Director Chapin Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor Mulvaney-Stannick. I am here tonight with Lee Perry, Division Director for Maintenance, and we are also joined here by the ASME president, Colby Delair, who I understand is happy to answer questions after the presentation. I'm going to make this quick, so this will be posted online, so hold on to your seats. Burlington was a leader in recycling back in the 1990s. Not many communities in Vermont were doing it. I think we were the first in a citywide municipal approach, and recycling remains an absolutely critical element, as does organics, to reducing trash. Burlington is not, and this has been a misunderstanding, Burlington is not considering whether to recycle, just how is the best to collect recyclables. There are two important intertwined issues that we're here to discuss with you all. One is how do we handle recycling operation in the next three to five years? And then really, what's the best long-term operational model for collecting all three solid waste streams, recycling, trash, and compost? There are three main ways to collect trash recycling and food scraps, subscription service, consolidated collection, franchise to private haulers, and a municipally-run consolidated collection system. Nationally, quite interestingly, only 11% of the communities surveyed by our consultant GBB actually had a subscription arrangement. This is the arrangement we have with trash, as you'll see in a second. Consolidated collection is the norm, with over 83% of communities having a consolidated collection. The balance are some sort of a hybrid scenario. For those who do have consolidated collection, around 58% pick it up through contracts and 40% municipally-operated. In Burlington, collection is fragmented. Recycling has a consolidated model that the city operates. As you all know, we serve residential areas with one to 10 units, and we fund the program through the solid waste generation tax. Trash, we have a subscription service, which basically every property owner or renter contracts with a hauler to get the service level and the hauler of their choice. Compost is a whole range of options, from subscription to dropping it off at the drop-off centers or composting in their backyard. The problems with our currently fragmented system are several: confusing pickup schedules, households managing pickups of various waste streams two or three different days of the week. My family, for example, has three different companies picking up each of the three waste streams. More truck traffic emissions and road damage when you have multiple haulers serving the same streets, and it's more costly due to having multiple companies in compost, trash and compost haulers, serving the same streets. Specifically to recycling, as you've heard tonight and we've talked before, there are a number of challenges operationally to delivering this program. We've had tremendously high staff turnover. 11 months is our average tenure of a worker. We've had 20 workers over the last 10 years in this program. We have a high vacancy rate, unable to fill these positions. We've historically had a high vacancy rate, excuse me, an injury rate. We've really struggled with adequately resourcing this effort. We run it on a shoestring. We have, therefore, old equipment with frequent breakdowns, and all of this adds up to a challenged staff morale. And of course, there's competing municipal priorities. There's a high level for expectation for services in our community and a struggle with affordability. We've tried to respond to these concerns through implementing a number of strategies, from hiring bonuses to reclassifying the positions, to adding a position, to swapping out the bins for toters. We currently have offered a position, temporary position, online at a higher wage than our regular workers are making, and we're struggling to even get interest on that. In FY26, as part of budgeting and Modern Gov initiative, thanks to the mayor's comments earlier, we have been exploring, how can we achieve multiple benefits through new ways of approaching recycling? And we see the possibility here of achieving a number of steps in a positive direction. Let me just hit the third bullet, enabling street maintenance and fleet techs to do more billable work. When our teams get distracted and have to fill in for recycling, we produce less new sidewalk, we replace fewer catch basins, we repair fewer fleet vehicles outside of recycling trucks. And the second to last bullet is giving field staff more time on infrastructure maintenance. DPW is all about infrastructure, and as you all know, we are not building enough sidewalk. We are not cleaning out our catch basins as frequently as we want to. There are many deferred maintenance tasks that are not able to get done. This is an interesting way where we can reprogram staff, not by eliminating positions, but reprogramming the existing positions in recycling, still-filled positions, into billable areas of the organization. And it also enables us, if we look at the potential of contracting haulers in the short term to pick up recycling, it gives DPW management breathing room to focus on future consolidated collection transition, if that is something that the council and the community desires. It is certainly something we are interested in at the staff level. So in essence, the short-term recommendation here is to, through an open bid process, in this calendar year, contract with one or two private haulers to continue the consolidated recycling pickup. And we are proposing to do that for the next three to five-year period. That would be funded through the solid waste generation tax and can serve as a pilot for future consolidated collection. In the medium term, as we have this opportunity to have contractors do the day-to-day work, we can then take the time to work with you and members of the public to explore implementing a fully consolidated collection model for all three waste streams. The city would establish geographic zones and award a franchise to one hauler in each zone to collect all three streams. The short-term approach of the pilot gives us the ability to move relatively quickly. There would not be any change for households needed. They would continue to see their recycling picked up weekly and just have to get it out to the curb as they do now. A number of the policy discussions for the fully consolidated program would not need to be addressed here in the short term. We wouldn't need to discuss opt-outs. We wouldn't need to discuss the size of the containers, backdoor access policy, et cetera. In addition, it wouldn't require haulers to make any administrative changes. We'd continue to use the existing solid waste generation tax. And it would have limited city administrative burden, which would enable us to focus on the longer-term consolidated collection efforts. So, one of the things I want to be honest about is the financial impact in the next couple of years to the solid waste generation tax. We have historically used this tax to fund our municipally-run recycling program, but there are other needs that have been growing in the background that need urgent attention, from landfill maintenance to uniting our two underfunded and not well-designed soil management areas, and Chin and Solid Waste is working with us to expand their drop-off center presence at 339 Pine. After these investments, which are short-term investments over the next one to two to three years, then the solid waste generation tax will really be able to decline, as it will be back to just funding the recycling program. In the medium term, the franchising of solid waste collection, we really want to work with you in a collaborative way to explore what is a more efficient and cost-effective way of collecting our solid waste. And the bottom section lists a number of the things we'd have to work through before we can implement. It is not an easy or simple thing, which is why we aren't proposing to jump to a fully consolidated program right away. You all know this, I'll just touch on it quickly, that there are a number of benefits for fully consolidating our three waste streams. As the mayor referenced, we are doing a bit of a roadshow here, as certainly members of the public have great interest in the future of recycling and have expressed some concern that they didn't fully understand the proposal that was quickly referenced at the last meeting. So we want to take an opportunity to have two public meetings, one later this week at the Miller Center, one next week at 645 Pine, to fully spend an hour and a half each night really talking it through and getting people's perspectives. And then we've listed out really the line here in the short term to get to a January 1 transition to a contracted recycling service. We'd need a decision quickly in order to be able to hit that benchmark. So final thoughts here, we are seeking your clear direction in the near term, at least on the short-term recycling proposal, for the following reasons. One is our field staff really needs to know what the future direction is going to be. As you heard tonight, there's a high level of concern about having to continue to shoulder this work. And two, we have to be in front of you in four weeks with a final budget. I need to know what direction to go to be able to put that budget together. So we're hoping for direction at the 28th meeting. Past efforts, we've run this before. Many councilors around this table remember us discussing this three, four, or five years ago. We, I think, generally agreed that consolidated collection was a good thing, we just struggled with how to do it. And so my hope is here that we can take both a short-term and a long-term view. Nothing we're doing in the short term precludes us doing either a municipally-run operation or a contracted consolidated collection in the future. Right now, we don't have the time and resources. I have half a billion dollars of capital work actively underway in our shop. We are flying, and we need the time to do this right, or we are going to lose ground collectively if we don't implement consolidated collection well. So my argument is that a short-term strategy for three to five years buys us time in order to do the planning needed to launch consolidated collection properly. Thanks so much. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Spencer. I will turn to councilors now to see who would like to get in the queue on this item. Councilor Carpenter, and then Councilor Newbeeser.
Thanks. Just two quick questions. The two public meetings, have you advertised them? Do people know about them?
About the public meetings?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we had a post today on Front Porch Forum, and we'll continue to do as much advertising as we can.
I may miss that. Have you thought, I'm just curious, a program where we might do less recycling, like every other week? I mean, is that, and it doesn't seem like, it sounds like other reasons to do some of the stuff that you're talking about. At the end of the day, it doesn't sound like it's a big budget item, but putting that aside, would there be savings in going to, say, every other week, or even the option of going every other week?
Yes, there would be, certainly. In this interim phase, if people feel like we can do bigger toters and that people can handle an every-other-week service, that would make the service cheaper, absolutely. And as we get to consolidated collection, we can have that discussion as well at that point. Usually, the variable rate comes with the size of the toter, not the frequency, because it's hard to know when you go down a street of 300 people, which one gets the every week, which one gets the every other week. It's just the size of the toter that directs the cost.
Well, it would seem to me if we're going to contract a private hauler.
Yep.
They do that all the time. I mean, my hauler comes every other week, and my next-door neighbor, they come every week. So I just toss it out.
That can be explored.
In your RFP to maybe look at that, and maybe some, you know, size of toter premium or discount or whatever you thought.
Good point.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Carpenter, Councilor Newbeeser, and then Councilor Litwin.
So first, as always, I got to start with an apology because I didn't send you questions in advance, so don't feel compelled.
Yeah. We're here for you.
But I tightly scheduled as having two young kids at home and just ran out of time, and I don't want a divorce. So I'm just going to kind of lay out where I am and just the areas I'm considering, because this is an ongoing conversation, but for me, there's three or four sort of areas I'm considering. One, I am a labor organizer, organizing public sector employees, and so the idea that we can maintain public control, maintain good public union jobs, is incredibly important to me. That's one piece of this. The other consideration is emissions reductions, which I know was definitely talked about last time the council discussed consolidated waste. I don't remember the year. It's 2018 and 2022, and two different times in the last, you know, a couple of things we talked about this in. But years ago now, when we discussed it, there's a clear, you know, if we just have one truck and they are in a zone, we don't have five trucks going down the same road, you're going to save emissions, and that helps our climate goals, and that's an important piece of this. There's also, for me, the consideration of overall, whether you're talking about, I'm paying a check to a private hauler, or part of my tax bill goes up one way or another, some cost is increased on consumers, you know, where does the consumer end up financially? What system out of the three options you presented, and in addition to whatever stopgap we kind of land on as a city, what gets the overall lowest cost on consumers? And so at least right now, my thinking is a few things. One, I'd love to hear from Colby at some point tonight. One, I'd love to hear from Colby at some point tonight because I want to get a sense of where workers are. I understand the impacts and I think there are legitimate concerns being raised because if I was hired for a job and then I was told to go do another job, I would not be happy. But I want to better understand sort of what we can do to be supportive, one, like what are the sort of options on the table? And then two, you know, okay, so we can't fill these recycling specific jobs, I hear that and I hear the legitimate efforts to do that over the years and there has been strong efforts there and that is a challenge. The lingering question I've had is just why can a Gothiers get those folks hired? Like, you know, if we're going, someone's hiring folks to do recycling and so what are we missing there? Is it that we're not competitive with the market on pay? Is it, whatever it is, like I want to understand why we can't sort of fill solid waste collecting jobs. And then the other piece here is just in the medium term, you know, we do need to figure out some stopgap. I don't know that I'm sold that this is, the stopgap being presented is the stopgap that we ought to take, but I agree, like there's a real immediate problem and we have to have a tangible, concrete, reasonable solution to that from a variety of ways, financially, working conditions, et cetera. To my mind, the first thing that came up after our last meeting when I was just thinking about this was why not pursue a separate enterprise fund that's fully municipally run? Because when we look at all of these three categories, it checks the emissions, BED and the water department, with whatever flaws of our public utilities, provide in the grand scheme compared to almost every other community incredibly low cost, cheap, you know, services to consumers. And they also have very strong affordability programs and on top of that, the city is already pursuing, you know, has been pursuing even further improving those affordability programs. So that level of public control allows us to deliver in the long term, I think over time for consumers is what I would argue. And then the, just want to make sure I got 30 seconds here. Yeah, I guess that's where I am. I want to lay that out because we're continuing. I just think that the amount of savings that we're considering for the change concerns me. Like I don't know, like if we were talking $4 million or something, like I would be like maybe more, I mean, I don't know that I would shift honestly, but it would be a more attractive option or a more understandable option. It just feels like this is in the overall budget, not a significant chunk of savings to justify potentially giving up this public good. So I'll stop ranting there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Newbezer. I think we'll go to other councilors if that's okay with you Director Spencer?
Okay, given the time, I think that makes sense.
Okay, and then take some notes because we'll give you an opportunity before we're done here. So, Councilor Litwin.
Well, I have to say I'm very much on the same page with Councilor Newbezer. Everything he brought up was on my list, so I would just put two checkmarks there next to everything, I guess, easiest way to move forward. I will also be curious to see the financial impact overall, how do we get to the lowest impact to the consumer because just because we're reducing costs somewhere such as on taxes, if the household is experiencing a cost increase, you know, somewhere else, it doesn't really do them any good. I was very compelled by the stories I heard tonight from the employees, including, it would be interesting to see, you've referenced it a couple of times tonight, what a high injury area it is. And I would be curious to see that cost broken out in terms of obviously nothing like, no minutiae, but just what does this do to our insurance? What does this do to, what are the overall costs of having these employees out? That's a cost that we bear and we need to think about when we're thinking about this program. And then communication, that is where I think we went wrong and we could have done better. And you don't need to respond to anything, again, we'll just pick this back up on email or whatever, but I think we can improve. I think what happened as we saw tonight during public comment was that folks were heard, we're just going to cut recycling, right? And didn't have a lot of context and texture to that conversation that they deserved and that was probably really confusing and frightening for folks, the idea of like, what do you mean, we're going to get rid of like union jobs and recycling and what am I going to do? And so I would like us to perhaps, if you could review the comments tonight, I think I, oh, that's just, nevermind, if you could review the comments that were given tonight and all the other emails we've gotten, I'm sure you've gotten some of the same emails, and start to think about an FAQ document that could be circulated so that we can address some of the key questions that keep coming up within the community that are fair questions, they're good questions, and it's because people care about recycling, which is a great problem to have. And make sure that this gets out into the community so that people understand why are we making this decision? I think that would be helpful. And then also, I noticed that you're having this meeting on 417 in the New North End at the Miller Center and I have to say, I haven't seen it, I mean, I do see a ton of stuff, so I might have missed it, but it's coming right up. It's three days away. I'm not sure how much engagement there is going to be, so I'd love to make sure you double down on communication to the New North End, particularly since it's in the New North End, that will be the most accessible meeting for them, to make sure that folks can come and get their questions asked. And maybe you can trial run an FAQ document and maybe they can hear from some of these employees tonight who had very impassioned pleas for us to think differently about this program. And then I guess, lastly, I would like us to think about, how can we, if we cut this, how can we improve the experience for people? How can we make sure that these private haulers are making it fewer emissions through our neighborhoods, you know, and that sort of thing? And looking at, what does it cost the average person in South Burlington or Williston or Colchester with a private hauler so that we can look at that as well and the folks can make informed decisions? And I'm done with the balance of my time.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. I have Councilor Bergman and then Councilor Barlow.
Well, it's no surprise that I support a citywide municipal solid waste collection system. I've been fighting this fight for a really long time and I know that we are not getting there very soon, not in the short term. And let me make my first point, it is essential to me that we not act in ways that foreclose that possibility. The medium term proposal calls for a fully consolidated system. And so it seems that there, the things that are missing in the memo are a process to get there and also a process that includes the development, the development or the creation of a committee that includes the union. I believe that the union should be at the table to help us design a fully municipal system, right? And not be an afterthought or not there. And just to be clear, in that medium term study, I believe that it should include, expressly include that it will be studying a consolidated system that includes a municipal system as one of the options. We had a fight, you know, five years ago to get that. It came late because it wasn't put into air. I don't want to have to do that again. I want it built right into the acceptance of the system. I support the union, I was a proud union member and the issues that they raise are serious. And while I'd like not to contract in the short term even, I am having a very hard time seeing a practical way to get there. So I just want to lay that out and particularly note that to Colby and your people there that I definitely hear you. I've got two points to finish. One is that I think that we really do need to just keep our eye on the money ball that is going to be in play when you try to get private contractors, take the city's roots in the short term and to really look at what their bids are and how it affects affordability. And that also includes, and I think Councilor Litwin was talking about the experience, the, you know, the raising of the tax, if there is an increase in the tax, how that is getting rolled out and what have you. It's just something that we need to monitor. You can't just set it and forget it, I think is what I'm saying with regard to that. And the last thing, and I did not see this in the memo, but the committee that I believe should happen and should include the union needs to be convened as soon as practicable in order to address the medium term plan. I hear you wanting to buy a lot of time and that's fine. If I were in your shoes, I'd want to do the same thing, but I need to hear, I think the people and the council need to hear what the target date is when that process is going to start. And if you had a quick guesstimate right now, I'd ask you to lay that out and if you don't, I'd ask you to bring it to us as soon as possible. And I know you've worked hard on this, I know Colby and his folks have put a lot of interest and attention to this and I hope that we can get to a place that works and the public good and the environmental goods are met. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Bergman. I'll go to Councilor Barlow, followed by Councilor Broderick.
Thank you, President Travis. Well, I am pleased that in this iteration of the short term goal that we are now considering using private haulers to take on the responsibility of the city's curbside recycling program without impact to, or at least service impacts to city residents. That's sort of the way I envisioned it when we were originally talking about it. And I think it's important for us to remember that when we started talking about jettisoning the city's recycling program, that it was in the context of trying to close a fairly sizable budget gap that we have. And I think we all agree that the $200,000 that we would save in doing that, given the benefit of the service is maybe penny wise and pound foolish. And so I'm glad we've made this pivot at this point. The thing that I'm still scratching my head about is how we got from finding a way to mitigate the impacts of that initial proposal with this newest one to this new proposal to stand up consolidated collection again and especially in municipal system. I was on the council, I first got on the council back in 21, I think, and we, this was something that we were talking about. And I dug my notes out and we, that would require us, and I think it would be, as I think Councilor Newbezer pointed out, it would be an enterprise fund, but we'd have, according to Lee Perry's estimates back then, we'd have 15 new employees to do that with the drivers and things. We'd have all the capital costs of standing up trucks again, but so we'd be actually growing, even though it would be in the context of an enterprise fund, we'd be growing city government again at a time when we're trying to figure out how to bring things back. There was also a number of issues with consolidated collection that we were talking through and I know you pointed some of them out in the slide deck, one of which was the opt out rate, which I think was 25% or so back in 2021. So that's significant. Another one was, we have private haulers that, whose livelihoods depend on these businesses that they have and they've invested in and losing Burlington's business would be significant for some of the smaller ones, maybe not the larger ones like Casella, they would weather it, but certainly when I was talking to the smaller ones back in 21, Duffy, Gothiers, this was an existential threat to their businesses that they've been running for a significant amount of time. So I think we need to be mindful of that as well. What I would hope in the long term is this is an opportunity for us to figure out how to incentivize, if we have private haulers doing our recycling collection, we figure out a way to incentivize them to get the split body trucks that they need in order to do, to do all of the collection so that they could, so that Burlington residents could have choice still like they have now, but they could get all of their waste streams picked up in one, you know, one service call, weekly or biweekly, or they could do small totes or big totes. You know, one of the things that's nice about my private haulers, there's only one day a year they won't come. I know if there's, if you got Monday collection from the city currently and it's a holiday, you don't get collected, you have to wait another week. So I think there are benefits to trying to take advantage of a robust private hauling system that currently exists that the city wouldn't have to undertake amongst all their other priorities that they have. And we've heard that you have an extensive number of projects and priorities to manage right now at DPW. So I think instead of pivoting to this idea that we need to stand up a municipal consolidated collection system or somehow try to marshal, you know, private haulers into these franchise systems, which would also, another project that you'd have to commit a lot of resource to, that we just take advantage of the markets that exist now and the haulers that have the expertise and have been doing this work and try to incentivize them to do, you know, multiple stream collection more effectively. So I look forward to the conversations as we get into this. But yeah, I am not convinced on this midterm goal at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barlow. I have Councilor Broderick and then Councilor Grant Kane. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this? Okay.
Actually, quick question, could you go back to the previous with the dates? I just wanted to look at that. It's not attached to the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll call that a point of information there, Councilor Grant. The floor is Councilor Broderick's and then we'll go to Councilor Grant and Councilor Kane.
Thank you. I wanted to start, Colby, by saying that I have the utmost respect and for the rank and file workers in the street department and their concerns are very well taken. In my position that we do need to retain our municipal recycling service and we do in the long term need to be progressing towards a fully consolidated municipal system, that is with the understanding that I think we would, as our stopgap, be decoupling recycle hauling from the street team and standing it up as its own thing. So it will be, so once we address the hiring challenges, which I would love to engage in conversation other time shape and on what is stopping, what is preventing us from hiring So that's, those are my thoughts on the short term. I know there are many, that leaves many unanswered questions just for this, that short term, but such as the finances around it, I think utilizing the solid waste tax can be done and I think Burlington residents will once again support retaining their public services and their public goods. In terms of this medium term proposal, I'll just say that we're talking about how there are three options, but this given medium term proposal just gives us one option, which is a fully franchise recycling trash and compost collection system. And it doesn't, in no way does this, that this medium term proposal say that we will be discussing a fully municipalized system. It just tosses it to the side and I am completely, I completely understand that this is something that will take a long time. And I agree with Councilor Bergman that if... And I agree with Counselor Bergman that if, if the council wills it, that we should stand up a committee as soon as possible to begin that years-long planning process and establishment of a enterprise fund and a fully consolidated municipal solid waste service. But all I see is the downsides of doing it now and doing it in the short term, which I'm under no illusion that we cannot do this in the short term. But I believe that a democratically-controlled public good, as with our other democratically-controlled public goods, are an essential service, and I, I don't believe that we're, that we're setting up Burlington residents for improvements, both in terms of service and in terms of what it will cost them, not the city, what it will cost them by, by privatizing. I, I, I'm looking forward to future conversations, both with you, Chapin, and you, Colby. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. We'll turn to Counselor Grant.
Thank you. So I have some of the same concerns that were just mentioned, and also having, in the central district, we have such a large amount of students who rent. And one of the concerns I brought up in the last meeting was that our landlords don't always communicate well with our student renters. And this kind of change, I think, is going to lead to more garbage in our streets. It'll, you know, be like having multiple move-out days. So I'm, I'm not really convinced that doing this franchising as a, a solution is really the best. I also have a few issues, you know, something maybe for you to think about. I, I would like to hear from the union. I would like to know what the union thinks about in terms of improving these positions. Is it that we are just not offering the, the amount of money that's necessary to recruit the people to do this type of work? Clearly, we need more people doing it to avoid the stress on other employees who have jobs that are meant to, they need to be doing different things. That, that's been made very, very clear, and they're being pulled into something that they either didn't sign on for, or they're not getting paid for, or this could be, you know, with the change in the totes, hopefully that you have seen that reduction, as you mentioned, in injuries. But that, that's, it's a real concern, you know, and, and what is accountability going to be if we franchise, right? What's the accountability to the city for the services that are provided? And then if we're using the tax money to pay private haulers, that doesn't make me feel good either. I, I, because it goes back to accountability. I think I had one more thing. I think that'll leave it there. I think my, my fellow counselors brought up some of the other concerns. Oh, I did have one more thing. I want to say that at our last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting where it was first brought up, we did get a discussion as to, even though we might not have fully agreed with it, we did get a discussion as to why this was being considered. So I do want to be, I think we should be fair about that. And I think that we also did kind of had a robust conversation with our initial reaction. So I just want to remind people of the importance of civic, civic engagement. If you can't watch the meeting when it's actually happening, you can always go back and, big shout out to Town Meeting TV, to watch it. Because we did have a, a fairly thorough introduction as to why this is happening and as a preview to other difficult budget conversations coming up. It's going to be really important for us all to be paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Counselor Kane?
Thank you for this update. I appreciate that it's moving in a good direction and all the work that's gone into it. I appreciate that the union's been willing to engage. And I, I think that issue is the most urgent issue, the labor issue. That date, January 1st, 2026, in my, in my mind, is kind of the key date right now. I understand the, the people who are currently hauling, who, who didn't exactly sign up for that, you know, are, feel like they're drowning, and, and that that is the, the soonest option that'll have them not hauling is, is going to be the most attractive option, option from their perspective. And with that in mind, you know, I, I do want to make sure that there's no stone left unturned in terms of, you know, what we can do on the labor side. You know, for instance, I understand the street team currently gets pulled onto hauling duty, and that the street team only has, you know, eight or so of 16 positions filled, that three people recently left, that two people are retiring shortly. I am wondering, though, if other positions potentially in traffic or in other departments, including parks, could potentially, you know, have amendments in their contract such that they could volunteer for these positions? I wonder if they could do that, if they could have that opportunity perhaps in conjunction with retention bonuses. I understand water department employees were given quarterly retention bonuses in a relatively recent circumstance, something like $500 a quarter. I'm wondering if we can do something similar for those who are pressed into recycling hauling duty between now and whenever we move on to, you know, an unimproved system. You know, whether or not we proceed with the current plan or, or switch, I, I think the retention bonuses would be an important piece. I have not heard that in, in this conversation so far, and I do just want to put that out there. In terms of the reclass issue, you know, we have this issue where currently they're, they're level 14, and paying the workers more who are, who are doing the hauling would lead to a bunch of phone calls coming in to the union president, a bunch of, you know, board of finance reclassifications. I am wondering, though, if there is a way around this, you know, perhaps if we could get, as Counselor Broderick suggested, if we could get the hauling positions into, you know, a separate money silo, if we could get those positions, you know, into a different division, department, however technically it would be defined, you know, that might be an opportunity, I understand, to, you know, since those would, would be in some sense new positions, to start them at a, you know, 15, you know, with a step to get to 16 with, with certain certifications, like the commercial driver's license, or potentially even to start at the 16 level. I understand that the union might be willing to waive precedent in that, in that case, which would, you know, if, if the union were to agree to that, right, lead to, you know, this issue essentially being resolved with the other, you know, employees being, being frustrated at the haulers being paid more. You know, I think the workers themselves, having spoken to some, do understand that, you know, at the end of the day, like, the city provides generally good jobs, good union jobs, and, you know, more of them is a good thing. And I really do think that, you know, having had some conversations with the union, if those conversations, you know, continue in earnest, that we will be able to get to, you know, a place that, that works for everyone without going down this path of, of taking the RFP process. And I think if we do go down that path, you know, I, I'm not convinced at all that we're going to be saving money, that the sum of the, you know, RFP bids for each zone plus administrative overhead costs of setting up and maintaining and regulating the program on our side would be, you know, less expensive than the program as it currently exists, you know, with any adjustments for retention bonuses or any other costs related to the program currently being underfunded. So, you know, from a financial side of things, you know, I think in the short term, you know, I'm not seeing, you know, the affordability piece of this. You know, there, there was that, that pitch to some extent being made when this was being lumped in with the FY26 budget discussion, which, you know, certainly I think would have ended up backfiring in terms of affordability if, if, if residents had to go to, to market to contract out hauling services, you know, like we do with trash, which we know is millions of dollars more expensive per year, based on the 2021 study, than consolidate the system. So, you know, from an affordability perspective, I'm not seeing it. From a labor perspective, which seems to be the main issue here, I, I think there are avenues that, you know, we haven't fully explored. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Is there any counselor that has not been recognized yet that wishes to speak on this item? Hey, Counselor Carpenter, did you say you had one additional question?
Yes, and you should have hit back to me. Just a couple, you had, had that chart with the, how many municipalities have services? And I would just, if you could remind me how many have private consolidated service, I would be curious. The other thing I wanted to understand is how many residential properties in, in Burlington, these would be rentals, have private service now?
So annually or monthly, between all the haulers, we collect around, or they collect from around 11,800 residential units in the city of Burlington?
Do apartment buildings, are they included in that or not?
Yes.
So we collect from apartment buildings?
We don't do any commercial, they, we don't, they don't.
Where do you define commercial, I guess?
Uh, you know, shopping.
Well, what about a 30-unit apartment?
So like a one, one to 10-unit complex?
Okay, so under 10 is we pick up?
But we also pick up Northgate, North Shore, and Franklin Square, which are multi-unit large complexes.
Okay, are those the only large ones we do?
Correct.
And I, wow, that's another question how that came to be, but how many, or maybe flip on, how many do we not? I'm just curious, out of the percentage of all the units in Burlington, how many do we not pick up? Or is it just those three, three apartment buildings?
Well, based off of the study in 2021, the GBB study, they estimated there was around 13,000 properties. That was based off of one to four residential units in that study, though.
I guess I'm still not understanding.
There's, there's two groups who aren't involved in paying the solid waste generation tax. One is if they're in large residentials that we can't serve, and the other is if they choose to opt out and self-haul.
Okay.
So the only people paying solid waste generation tax are folks who have private trash service, and the haulers add our tax onto the bill to pay for recycling. People also, when they self-haul, do go pay some portion of solid waste generation tax to CSWD, who passes it on to us. So even people who self-haul do contribute to the city's recycling program.
And I don't need an answer. I guess I just, if, if you have that data, you can maybe send it to us. I'm just confused about the conversation about would this increase or decrease people's interest in recycling? I mean, are landlords just opting, do we have a lot of opt-out, I guess, would be? Because I'm just missing that. And then the final other thing for future, like Counselor Kane, the cost, I'm really not understanding, you know, how much more is it going to cost me?
Thank you, Counselor Carpenter. I think we've had a good discussion here. Director Spencer, Director Perry, you did hear quite a bit from folks here. I didn't, I, I know that we'll continue to hear from you, but were there any items you immediately wanted to respond to now?
I can address a lot of these questions via email, if that's fine with the counselors.
Okay.
If folks want, Lee, who's, you know, our closest expert here, to get answers initially, but we're happy to put them in writing as well, so everybody can have them.
Okay. Would you mind putting the slide back up just one more time, just showing sort of what the schedule is from here, just so folks can keep that in mind? All right. So I know that folks will continue to engage you all with email, but it looks like April 16th will be the next opportunity at the Public Works Commission meeting for folks to weigh in. Could you provide just a bit more detail around sort of time, place, location for that one? You mentioned it before, but just to provide that, that information.
Yes, 6:30 this coming Wednesday at 645 Pine Street. The DPW Commission has a public forum in the beginning, and we have this as a fairly lengthy agenda item at that public meeting.
Okay. Then two public meetings on the 17th and 23rd, and then we would expect to see you back here at our next meeting on the 28th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further from you all, or from you, Mayor? Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation and for the time that was put into it and for hearing us out this evening, and we'll look forward to staying in touch over the coming days and weeks.
Thank you.
And thanks as well to the union and your members and colleagues as well for your participation in this effort.
Point of inquiry?
Yes, Counselor Litwin.
Just me. I was just hoping that since there were a lot of great questions, and they're going to get put into an email, we could make that document public by attaching it to the next agenda, if that's possible.
Sure. Point well taken, if you're able to present it in sort of an FAQ-type document, knowing that it may be posted, I think that that may be helpful for the council as well as for members of the public.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That completes our work sessions for the evening. The, the next two items on our agenda are mayor general city affairs and city council general city affairs. I, I know there's a number of important items, as we've heard already, and, and many in addition that folks want to be heard on. I'm also mindful of the time. It is 9:40 PM, and we have not started our deliberative agenda, and there are city staff here to present on some of those items. So certainly want folks to have their say, including you, Mayor, you're next up, but did just want to sort of time-check us as to where we're at. And I haven't had a chance to welcome Counselors Singh and Schacter to the table here, so I appreciate their being here, and, and the best we can do to keep to a, a reasonable hour at, at their first regular meeting would be very, very helpful. So, Mayor, we now turn to you on item five, general city affairs.
Thank you. So I would like to just start with my usual three big areas for updates, community safety, housing, and climate. And the first piece I want to mention is a few community safety-related events coming up, public events. The first being this Wednesday, April 16th at 11:30, I'll be holding my third monthly press briefing on community safety issues. Chief Burke will be joining me. I will also be joined by representatives from our library and CJC to talk about a pilot program we've been operating within the library, and also new hires we've, we've brought onboard around the, for safety issues within the building itself. And also Ingrid Jonas, my senior advisor on community safety, will be presenting some initial news on the Situation Table, which I addressed in my State of the City address on Monday night last week. And this is all just in, in terms of a standing monthly briefing that we do to the, to the community and to the press, and Town Meeting TV covers it as well in its entirety, which I appreciate. And the next community safety forum, we do these every two months, will be on May 8th at 5:30. We're still, we're still working on the location. And given the timing, we'll be focused on looking at issues related to mental health and our unsheltered population of folks here in Burlington as the weather warms. I know a lot of people have questions around how we will be responding this year and acknowledging that what you, what we see with folks who are trying to survive outside will continue to change in the next couple of days in particular because of the continued abrupt changes in the GA emergency housing program on the state level. I want to remind folks that the last change happened on April 1st. There are about 655, 60 households were moved out of that program, and we haven't even seen the full outcome of that yet, because many folks are using other means to continue paying on their own hotel room fees. And soon, Sarah Russell predicts in the next couple of days, we'll be seeing more folks, sadly, being left out on the streets because they have run out of money, essentially. So this forum on May 8th will be talking about our warm-weather strategies and how to continue to support people and our plan for the upcoming season. Final event is not public, but it's an important partnership with UVM. We're doing a community safety forum with their students and families. Chief Burke and I will be on a panel with their public safety leaders on campus, just to talk about what the city's been doing, but also for UVM to share that with, with that. that audience, to make sure we continue to good town-gown relationships with UVM. Also, lastly, on community safety, our gun charter is moving through the process, and we had Burlington bar owners testify, I believe, last week. The city attorney and I will be testifying tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow. Yes, somebody will tell me where to be, and we'll, we're continuing to create good momentum going forward on this item. I want to thank Counselor Brown McKnight for, not testifying, but being part of a press conference at the State House, just to make sure we're continuing to send a unified front between council and mayor on this important issue. And we have started in the Senate, it still has a ways to go, but this good momentum will help it in the House as we move through the process there, and I'll keep you posted. On the housing topic, I today had a meeting with the Mayor's Coalition. There are eight cities slash towns in the state who have mayors, and we held our first meeting, and there was quick collaboration on pursuing some further advocacy around the GA Housing Emergency Program. The Newport, the city of Newport just elected a new mayor at Town Meeting Day, and even he and his community are seeing folks, unsheltered folks, on the streets of Newport. Not at the same numbers, of course, but this is really a statewide issue, and even the mayor of Berry City, my hometown, there's interest around continuing to provide some solidarity in terms of collective voice around the consequences to the larger cities and towns on this really important issue. Coming soon to the council, and Counselor, our president, Council President Travers was able to join us. We also extended invitation to the Progressive Caucus leader, Counselor Bergman. Saw an initial update on the memorial block at a very high level in terms of design, and housing is included, hotels included, a lot of public space indoor and outdoor. We'll be, I'm excited to bring this to the council soon. It was a good, good conversation, and I was, continue to appreciate the commitment to the public and the public good in the, how this design is starting to roll out. So more on that soon. And then finally, H91, I know we'll have a lobbyist update the next council meeting, but H91 is an important one to be tracking, just going back to the Emergency Housing Program, because it is sort of the only bill now moving that touches on emergency housing policy. It seems as if the legislature and the governor have abandoned what comes next immediately in terms of GA Emergency Housing Policy Solutions. They have sort of abandoned the Budget Adjustment Act, and there is no moving policy from what we can tell at this point. But what they're now focused on is H91, which is now in the Senate, which is focused on implementing a new change in 2027 that would, I'm not going to get into the details, but I keep, I keep sounding the alarm that we have to talk about the immediacy of the next 18 months before we redesign a program starting in 2027. It's, it's very, it's very concerning, and it should be concerning to all of us about what really happens now versus in 2027. In terms of climate, our climate advisors meet again this week, and they're starting to break down into certain sectors and topic areas. The first topic they'll be diving into is nature-based solutions. The format is listening to city staff and partner organizations working on climate policy, and then assessing from there where are the gaps and the, and the opportunities to put recommendations forward for a more comprehensive climate strategy. Next up after that, because there's been a lot of conversation in the community, is going to be solid waste management. We have represented from CSWD as a climate advisor. So while these meetings are advisory to me as the mayor and not public meetings, they are, I'm asking folks to talk about that next, so that we can really benefit from some initial ideas from that, that body of both community and, community and city staff combination of folks. Under the other category of other, graffiti, I hear about everywhere I go, I'm sure counselors do as well. And so we had a citywide meeting internally on graffiti to not only get better at reporting out to the community and to even me as the mayor about what we're doing already on remediating existing graffiti, because there is a lot of work, it doesn't always look like that, but it's done across many departments, and so we want to get clarity on that to bring back to council and the public. But also, how do we start initiating more comprehensive work? And I've challenged the team to also look at the next budget as an opportunity of what would have the highest impact if we were to create a tiny bit of investment in this critical piece of it, and how do we also start with city buildings in particular to set the model? So more to come of that soon. A couple other quick ones. I finally met with the Trusted Community Voices Group, and I encourage counselors to look into this a little bit more. It's a, I will say, underutilized tool within the city, and I look forward to how we can amplify their, first of all, that they still exist since COVID. These are representative liaisons to many immigrant and refugee parts of our community, and they do great work, and they're eager to help share more information out to their communities, especially in these times. So I'm very keen on, interested in counselors' input as well of how we can better use TCVs. We held a meeting in this room, which a couple counselors attended with, on the status of great street Main Streets with many concerned businesses. I really appreciated members of the community keeping that a civil meeting, so people could really listen to, understand each other, respect staff and their responses. We, we heard loud and clear around the impacts of this project on businesses in the downtown, and we also did our best to provide public information on that we are on track in terms of the timeline, that the deepest, and I call it the deepest and darkest work, is really about to wrap up, and we have some more street-level work that starts to come online, which labels us to allow more mobility around these construction sites, and we're doing our best to adapt to meet people's needs while also not adding years on to this project. I also emphasize Vermont is not larger cities. We have constraints on the workforce around how much workforce is available to do these jobs on, at all hours of the night. We are in Vermont, we have serious limitations in that, and I think that's an important piece for people to remember in this tricky piece. And then, just to shortly wrap up on this, I encourage counselors, even if you are not a new, brand-new counselor, to come to the administration's orientation we're offering on Wednesday, the 16th, where we'll talk about the four biggest budgets within the general fund, as well as a general finance overview. I think that will be very timely for getting ready for the May budget meetings, which you're also very welcome to. They're all get recorded, where we go through every one of the 18 budgets and prepare for your presentation, official presentation in June of fiscal year '26. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We'll now turn to City Council, General City Affairs. Is there any counselor that wishes to be recognized on General City Affairs? Yes, Counselor McKnight, then Counselor Grant.
Thank you, President Travers. Today, for a general update, I have to talk about a topic that unfortunately, I think, I suspect we will all be talking about a lot for the next year. For those of you who were not aware, a man was taken by ICE today, just one town away from here, for no reason other than his ideas. The illegal injustice done to Mosin-Madawi today in ours home state should be enough to make us all rise up against it with fury. But just in case that's not enough, let me say this too. If they can take Mosin, they can take any of us. They can take children from our schools. They can take your colleagues, your friends, your family. If you look at yourself in the mirror, or you look at me, a white mother of two young kids, who is a US citizen and a respectable member of her community, and you think, oh, but we're safe, nothing bad will happen to us, we're nice white people. If you think that, you are wrong, and it's time to wake up. These men in hooded masks and tinted cars could make up a reason out of thin air and come disappear you in broad daylight, and your family wouldn't be able to do anything to stop it, except maybe call a lawyer, and by then, who knows where you'd be? If they can take Mosin, they can take any of us. We must all be united in fighting against the utter insanity and injustice of the Trump administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I would add on to that, many, many people showed up this morning in support of Umasa Oztak, whose hearing was at our district court in Burlington. I want to say that at this time, I'm thankful to the mayor for mentioning the meeting with Trusted Community Voices, because it's more important than ever that we are in contact with our neighbors, our new American neighbors, our international students. There are many, many people living in our community who are in different stages of becoming citizens, or they're here to study, and they have the necessary visas to do that. Many of them who have spoken out about genocide in the Middle East have been targeted. The Anti-Defamation League has declared certain organizations as extremists because they are providing the names of people who participate and protest and use their right of freedom of speech. Their names are being reported to our current federal government, which is leading to these incidents of people being disappeared. So we really need to be paying attention to our neighbors who are more marginalized. We need to make sure that everyone is educated, that our neighbors who are new Americans, our international students, their friends, family, neighbors, we need to be educated on what people's rights are and how to respond if something like this happens to them, how you can be their voice if their voice is suddenly silenced. I also want to just do a reminder that there will be a Public Safety Committee meeting this Thursday evening. It will be remote, and the Zoom link should be published on Civic Clerk tomorrow. We are looking forward to hearing from Chief LeChance, which will be one of his last meetings, very sadly, and then also looking forward to talking to Chief Burke and having some initial conversations around major concerns in the city, especially the Central District, issues around the priority response plan, online reporting, another look at Neighborhood Watch, and just a reminder of the current organization chart of BPD, because there have been so many changes in the last couple of years with the addition of the Cape Department and other positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. I have Counselor Bergman next. Is there any other counselor that wishes to be recognized? All right, Counselor Bergman.
Well, let me just add, I mean, I was going to make this long and incendiary speech, but I'll cut it, except to say, just to put a real emphasis on it, that the Führer and the President of El Salvador today just announced that they will not return the illegally kidnapped and disappeared Maryland man. But I have to say, there's two things that are really important. One is that so many hundreds of people showed up at Elmwood Avenue today to be witnesses to Ramessa's first hearing, which was held in front of Judge Sessions, and the news reports were, were pretty good. And I just want to thank Burlington Police for having a presence for safety, but really allowing this demonstration to go. So that was, that was really, really excellent. Others have, have said here that there will be no end to this unless the people stop it. It is absolutely clear what this administration is doing, and I don't use the, the term that I used for the president lightly, but I, I'm, it's very, very, very serious. But I will say that we've taken, as a community, many steps, and I hope that our next meeting here will take the next step on the free speech resolution and get us to the place where we can speak as a united community, because, as I've said many times over the years, bast ya, which just means enough already.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you. Yeah, to add on to what has already been said, also today, Harvard University has had recently displayed its defiance against the Trump administration, who is, who is cutting almost $9 billion of federal funding to Harvard, because Harvard has chosen to defy the orders that the Trump administration has attempted to impose on it, which among other things includes selling out their students to be kidnapped and, and taken and disappeared in the same way that other institutions such as Columbia University folded under that pressure. So I would like to use this time to call on our higher education institutions, University of Vermont and Champlain College, to use the model of Harvard's defiance to be ready to defy the Trump administration and protect your students, protect our students, because they will, they will come for us, as we've just seen today. They will come for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Is there any other counselor that wishes to be recognized? Okay, as I'm not sure that we'll get to City Council President updates, I'd just like to take a brief moment right now, and thank you, Counselors McKnight and Grant, Bergman, and Broderick, for your comments there. And in the spirit of togetherness at this first meeting in our council year, I'd just like to say something for a moment. I am someone who has been skeptical of how or if this city council or city voters should weigh in on complex international issues. However, whether here in City Hall, in our community, or across the nation, particularly when involving young people on our college campuses, I completely support the free speech rights of everyone in this country, citizens and non-citizens alike, to speak their piece, to stand up for the Palestinian people, and to criticize our government without fear of retaliation from the same. In recent weeks, what has happened to Mohammed Khalil, Ramessa Oztak, and Mosin-Madawi, unfortunately among many others, is beyond troubling. The authoritarian stripping of these students' immigration status runs against the core foundation of our country. The detention of Ms. Oztak and Mr. Madawi in our state, the state of freedom and unity, is deplorable, and all of these individuals deserve the same rights bestowed upon all Americans, including but certainly not limited to the rights to free speech and due process. These unbelievable circumstances happening right here in Vermont are made all the worse, all the more nightmarish by the president simultaneously ignoring our Supreme Court, while also coddling dictators who are accomplices in this ignorance, to your point, Counselor Bergman. On this issue, I believe there's no question, we have an obligation to stand up for our immigrant neighbors, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on this council and the mayor, on the role we can collectively play in resisting tyranny, and look forward to working with you, Counselor Bergman, on the resolution that we are working on together for the 28th. So thank you. That takes us to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated?
So.
All right, thank you, Counselor Bergman. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Counselor Parlow?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? I will just note one thing, one of the items on the consent agenda, the last item, is our putting council initiative funds towards a graffiti cleanup effort put on by Bruce Wilson and the Art So Wonderful Organization. Mr. Wilson dropped off here some photos of the work that that group has done over the years, and if anyone here on the council is interested in looking at them, Mr. Wilson, Bruce, did leave them here for, for us to review. If there's no other discussion on the consent agenda, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So we now get to our deliberative agenda, and I told Director Ward that, don't be mad if it's 8:15, but here we are at 9:58. And Director Ward, appreciate your being here and your work with our ordinance committee in the last council year on our vacant buildings, proposed ordinance. Counselor McKnight, I will eventually turn to you for a motion on this item, but if, okay by you, could I turn the floor first to Director Ward to introduce the item and perhaps give us a brief recap on what's happened with the ordinance committee?
Thank you, President Travers. I will, and I will do my best to be as brief as possible and leave as much time as you need for questions. To give a quick recap, this ordinance, the amendment, came to you through the first reading that was sponsored by the council president, and subsequently went to four ordinance committee meetings, and it was carefully reviewed, and I got a good grilling from Counselors Bergman, Counselor Brown McKnight, and Counselor Shannon. I think it was very well-vetted, and we reached a slightly different version than what was originally presented to you. The idea was to promote compliance The idea was to promote compliance with the ordinance as we have it and to provide a more equitable fee system based on building types. Couple of the key items were definition recommendations. Very simple one was to add that the director means the Director of the Department of Permitting and Inspections. The other definitions more fully clarified what the meaning of a vacant building was. On the subject of dangerous buildings, which differ slightly from vacant buildings, dangerous buildings essentially just means a building that is near or about to collapse, it's such a danger to nearby buildings or other people that it's likely, it needs to get taken down or it's going to cause some more imminent damage. The one change, though, on the dangerous building side was to add an administrative fee for the staff time, the administrative fee of $100 for staff time when we issue a dangerous building permit. It was something that was never in the original ordinance but was added here. The bigger item that was changed was about the fees. So what was originally proposed was an ordinance that was, well, let me start with, the current ordinance says it's $750 per quarter or $3,000 per year for a vacant building permit. At the first reading, the proposal was to double that to 1,500 per quarter or 6,000 per year, but the version that is coming before you tonight is different in that it changes it to, we settled on $1,000 per quarter or 4,000 per year, which was based on the expectation that the fees have to be generally related to the amount of work or staff time that is put into administering the program. At the ordinance committee's direction, I did my own analysis of what it takes from start to finish, and that's where we settled on that $1,000 per quarter, because if I need to defend that in court, that's one I feel comfortable that I can say that pays for the, that's a fee that pays for the services that we're providing. Additionally, we have a tiered system that's proposed here. It's just the two tiers. The tier system means in the second year of this ordinance, the fee would increase to 1,500 or quarter or $6,000 annually, and the staff will be evaluating the time that it's taking for each of our inspections more closely to see in 12 months, when we come back to evaluate this for you, if that fee after year two needs to go further. But at this point, it would stay after, it would go year one to a year two higher fee, and then unless it's amended, it would stay at that year two fee for year two and beyond. The mayor had encouraged me to review the workload and consider if there was a more equitable fee structure for residential properties compared to commercial properties. After reviewing a number of nationwide programs, I settled on what I thought was the most reasonable but easy for us to enforce. The amendment you have before you tonight has a lower tier fee for one and two family homes. We find that they're generally easier for us to inspect, take less staff time, and we, you know, physically, if we're walking around a larger commercial structure, it does take us more time. And lastly, it's the late fee, something that was never in the original ordinance, and I'm not sure, you know, in the 15 years I've been the director, that I haven't come forward with that proposal myself, but we realize that it's in almost every other ordinance we have. There's a late fee if you don't pay something on time, and if we, if you are overdue for fees, most other ordinances specifically call out that 12% per year interest rate that is charged. So that's going to be added through this ordinance amendment. So I'd be happy to answer questions that you have, but ultimately would look for you to support this with a vote, to vote yes tonight to make this our updated vacant building ordinance.
Thank you, Director Ward, and thanks as well to our ordinance committee from the last council year, Councillor Shannon, Councillor McKnight, and Councillor Bergman. Councillor McKnight, could I perhaps turn to you for a motion on this item, and then we'll see if there's any questions or comments from councillors?
Yes, I move to waive the reading and approve the ordinance as amended by the ordinance committee and ask for the floor back after a second.
Thank you, Councillor McKnight. Is there a second? Thank you, Councillor Bergman. Councillor McKnight, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Director Ward. That was a very good summary, and I just want to thank you for all your partnership in the ordinance committee. I don't think I need to go into too many details right now since we definitely spent enough time doing that already. But just for the benefit of the public, you know, I just wonder, we've talked about this before, but it bears repeating, that, you know, negligent landlords must be steeply penalized for the harm they cause our community, and, you know, this is a change that will not impact most people who rent out properties, just the small handful that don't take proper care of them, and, you know, just don't leave vacant buildings in good condition when there isn't anyone living there. Personally, I would have liked to see even higher fees, but as Director Ward said, you do run into some legal issues there. People can appeal your fee, and we didn't want to see that happening. We wanted this to work well, so I'm happy with where we landed. And just to put it really simply, I think I said something like this the last time, but I want people to know that if you are running a property-based business with a total disregard for the negative impact that you have on your community, it's about to get a lot more expensive. So, take note. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councillor McKnight. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized? Councilor Bergman.
Let me just add my thanks to my committee members and to Director Ward and Attorney Sturdivant, and say that, you know, we have done some tweaks on this ordinance since we drafted it and adopted it in 1999, but not of the substantial nature in terms of the fees. So this is really important, and the key is obviously to enforce and to do that. And Bill has had the occasion, I remember one on Archibald Street and another one in the South End, I think it was in South Cove even, right?
Neighborhood.
Or that neighborhood, that we had to enforce that when I was working at the attorney's office. So these fees cannot be penalties. You have a penalty provision, and those fees are actually capped by the state and by our charter, and these fees can't be taxes. So hence the need for us to make sure that they're grounded in the work that's done to administer the program, and that administration includes the amount of work that it takes to enforce. So I look forward to some vigorous enforcement and then the record-keeping, and then if we need to come back and adjust these fees to be higher because, you know, it takes a whole lot to get them through the court system, et cetera, then that's what we should do, we should amend this further. So, thank you all, and I look forward to passing this tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Bergman. Councillor Lippman, and then Councillor Newbezer, and then Councillor Barlow, and then hopefully we can go to a vote.
Thanks, Director Ward. Just a couple of questions. One related to section, you referenced the appeals board, and I just wanted to confirm that the appeals board, you meant the Board of Housing Review.
For Chapter Eight sections, it goes to the DPW Commission.
Oh, okay. Great. And then the section question I had was about owners of dangerous structures and buildings, and, you know, it's dense. So my question is, how is your office, if we pass this tonight, how is your office able to determine which prioritize the buildings that, you know, are vacant and then start moving through the list, I guess, to get into the buildings to determine whether they are at risk of being dangerous structures? I mean, I imagine some buildings might look one way from the outside, but from the inside they might be entirely different, and so I'm just wondering how you're going to approach that.
Yes, I would say most of our dangerous buildings don't actually come from being vacant for a long period of time. Most of our dangerous buildings are actually from either an incident like a fire or a vehicle into a building. Something that structurally has a sudden and unexpected impact changes the structural stability of one wall, which can then make the entire structure unstable and being, you know, being necessary to be taken down. We had one a few years back out on the mouth of the river, and that was a result of Mother Nature. The riverbank just took that, you know, behind the property, it took the property away, and it was somewhat sudden and unexpected. That's typically our finding in most of these cases, not so much that they are buildings so bad that they're vacant and left ignored that they go that. That's my team's job to not let that happen, so I don't foresee those coming in most cases from longstanding vacant buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lippman. Councillor Newbezer?
Thank you, Director Ward, and to the ordinance committee for this. I'm definitely supportive, I'll be quick. Well, I'll keep it short. I just wanted to thank you specifically for, one of the first conversations we had when I joined the council was around Riverside Avenue, and you walked me through some of the work, especially on the north side, if I'm getting it right, around buildings there, and there's a smattering of vacant buildings all along that corridor, and there's been real tangible progress on that front, so I appreciate that, and I think this is another critical step to addressing this issue, because we've got a number of properties that we need better tools to take care of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Newbezer. Councillor Barlow?
Thank you, President Travers, and thank you. I had a specific question. If there was a, there's a vacant building and it, there's an application to demolish that building, but that application is challenged, maybe because they don't have a development plan or there's, it's deemed to have historical significance. Would that building still be vacant if they had an active permit in place?
It would really depend, be dependent on the issuance of the permit. So if the permit is issued, there's a period of 60 days that is written into the ordinance, that it should be taken down within that. I can review the circumstances and then make a decision and provide that in writing to the property owner, that we're either sticking with that or we're changing it because of whatever the appeal action was. The, all of the actions by the director or our staff are appealable to the DPW Commission. So if either a neighbor or the property owner themselves was aggrieved by our decision, if they felt we were wrong, that appeal would go before the DPW Commission. We have one coming up in May for a property in the South End.
I just, I just, that's like one hole in this that I saw, that like someone could start accruing significant penalties, they intend to tear something down, but they're not allowed to because it's tied up in this appeals process or in court. And so I would want, I would want to know that that was, that would not be the intent of this amendment.
No, certainly not. That's not what this is about, but if there were cases that were specifically tied up in court, I would obviously defer to our city attorney's office, and our city attorney that works with our office typically is Kim Sturdivant. She's helped us a great deal with other issues, and I would, I'm sure she would give us great counsel for a specific cause in whatever, you know, action someone might have. And again, whatever we ultimately decide on, if the property owner was aggrieved by that, the due process right would be for them to go to the DPW Commission to say, "The ward's lost his mind, he's wrong." Or if a neighbor said, "Oh, he's being too gentle on this property owner because it's in court," whoever the aggrieved party was could appeal that decision. So there's a process already in place. I feel comfortable with that, happy to answer more questions if you have any.
Just if, as the process is playing out, I would, I guess, expect that the accrual, the accrual of time toward additional penalties would be paused, perhaps.
I think I'd have to take every case under, you know, the examination of exactly what was happening there, because I could see a case where someone did that intentionally and delayed it. That's not the intention of the ordinance, but the ordinance is to try to get it back to useful value and, you know...
Point of information.
I'm sorry, sorry, just a moment, Director Ward. Yes?
I just wanted to provide a clarifying point that I think might be helpful.
Great.
To Councillor Barlow.
Well, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not an appropriate point of information.
Okay.
I think City Attorney Brown, we just went over this.
We did. I think if Councillor Barlow wants to allow some of his time to be used...
Yeah.
...to hear the question, he can.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, Councillor McKnight is asking if you would yield to a question. We'll lead into your time here, Councillor Barlow.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, Councillor McKnight, you're recognized now.
Okay. Sorry for gunking up the wheels here.
It's okay.
I don't actually have a question, though, I have a piece of information that I think will be helpful.
Well, you know, did you know, Councillor Barlow, that...
Did you know that it is allowed to have a vacant building? It is just not allowed to have a vacant building in disrepair. So in the circumstances that you're talking about, Councillor Barlow, if the person was trying to demolish their building and then they, you know, fixed up the outside in the meantime, they wouldn't continue to get penalized. Does that make sense? Director Ward, let me know if I paraphrase that correctly.
I think you're spot on.
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Thank you for that. I don't know that it gives me, gives me comfort, but thank you.
All right. I will also note that we are joined by Attorney Sturdivant, and so Attorney Sturdivant, thanks for your assistance with this. I don't know if you have anything further to add to Councillor Barlow's question here.
I don't. As Director Ward said, certainly we would be taking and looking at the case as it comes, especially if it's under appeal. But the fees, as far as the permit fees, would be occurring by any other counties we'd be looking at.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Sturdivant. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized? Councillor Carpenter?
This question about, is there a definition to unoccupied? I mean...
So we actually, that is part of the subject of the appeal coming up in May, but unoccupied is exactly what it is. It's unoccupied or occupied by unauthorized persons. So if someone's living there and they shouldn't be, that's still vacant.
If they're not really living there, but they go often to the building, I mean...
I think, again, like Councillor Barlow's question, it's on, it's based on the specific circumstances. So we've had situations where family members who live on the same street are, you know, checking after an elderly family member who is in rehab for six or 10 months, lawn is mowed, someone's checking the mail, those sort of things. Often, I think that could happen, and it doesn't even come to our attention. Often, it's the properties that come to us that they start looking shabby. That's an indication someone's not occupied.
Right, and I was not assuming that. I was assuming disrepair as well, but, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Carpenter. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? All right, seeing none, then we will go to a vote. The vote is on to waive the second reading and approve the ordinance as amended by the ordinance committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That carries unanimously, so thank you again, Director Ward, Attorney Sturdivant, and to our ordinance committee from the last council year for their work on this item. The next item on our agenda is Item 8.2, and I will tell folks that whereas I would like to finish this meeting as close as possible to 10:30, I'm mindful of the fact that that's not going to happen, so when we get there, I would entertain a motion to suspend our rules to complete our deliberative agenda, but let's not do that yet. We have Item 8.2, a public hearing regarding a proposed zoning amendment on performing arts centers in the Enterprise Light Manufacturing District. We will open that public hearing at 10:19 PM. Is there anyone here in City Hall that wishes to present or be heard at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who wishes to be heard on this public hearing? Please use the raise hand function if you would. I'll give it another go. Anyone here in City Hall or online that wishes to be heard in this... Hall or online that wishes to be heard in this public hearing? All right, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing at 10:20 p.m. And now turn to item 8.3, which is the deliberative item on this ordinance regarding an amendment to the Comprehensive Development Ordinance on Performing Arts Centers in the Enterprise Light Manufacturing District. I will let folks know before turning to this item that I have heard from some other counselors here that the proposed action on this may be, rather than to adopt the ordinance, to send it back to the ordinance committee for some further consideration. But before turning to that, I appreciate your being here, Director Dillard, on a couple items this evening. And Counselor McKnight, I was going to turn to you similarly for a motion on this item, but are you good with my turning to Director Dillard first? Oh, and yes, thank you for recognizing Counselor Schacter. Counselor Schacter has informed that due to a professional conflict of interest, that she does need to recuse herself from this item. So thank you, Counselor Schacter, and when we're done on this item, we will call you back in. And so, Director Dillard, we turn to you perhaps for a bit of background here on this item, as well as, I know that you know that the potential motion here may be to send it back to the committee, and if you could perhaps expand upon why this may need some further deliberation, that would be great.
Sure. I do have some slides, Lori. I don't know if I can get access to share. I may be able to. They're not absolutely necessary. I can give you the overview. Plan BTV South End established a policy foundation for a zoning approach in the South End that intends to reinforce the area as an arts hub. And during that planning process, there was a zoning amendment to allow performing arts centers for the first time in the South End on properties fronting on Pine Street and what is now Queen City Park Road. The rules were fairly prescriptive. On Queen City Park Road, a pack performing arts center could be up to 15,000 square feet in footprint or in size, and on Pine Street, 5,000 square foot. There's also stipulation that no more than 50% of any performing arts center can be devoted to food and beverage sales. There is just one performing arts center in the South End today, that is Arts Riot. This zoning amendment process started in the fall of last year, when Higher Ground, which is a performing arts center that has existed in our region for some time, continued to look for alternative locations, particularly in Burlington. They've identified some sites, one in particular in the South End, that would require this rezoning, that changes the rules regarding performing arts centers on Pine Street. So I want to sort of reiterate that Plan BTV South End does establish a pretty clear pathway for performing arts centers generally. It proposes that the city prioritize arts uses, and I think the performing arts center definitely qualifies as one of those. The plan also calls for a shared parking network, and parking was a topic of a lot of discussion at the ordinance committee, and we did some research along with our colleagues at DPW to identify parking resources in the South End. And in fact, there are more than 1,000 surface parking lots within a 15, actually a 10-minute walk of the center of the sort of Pine Street South End area. So in addition to the Pine Street area, the ordinance committee discussed Queen City Park Road. This is the Burton site area. There was an amendment to allow performing arts centers down there up to 15,000 square feet. During the ordinance committee discussion, they zeroed in on this as perhaps an area to explore more, and ultimately recommended an amendment that would no longer allow performing arts centers in the Queen City Park Road area. It's my opinion that that is a good policy. That area of town is one of our few remaining industrial sort of workforce areas of the city. We are embarking on a citywide economic development strategy very soon, and it would be prudent, in my opinion, to wait, allow that area to continue to be reserved for industrial and enterprise businesses, see how the market and the community are feeling about that area before further allowing any other uses that ultimately could outcompete industrial users in terms of rent. So the amendment does a few things. It makes the, it eliminates the square footage cap on performing arts centers on Pine Street. It eliminates the ability to have a performing arts center on Queen City Park Road. And that is essentially the amendment in summary. Happy to take any questions. I will add that the performing arts center remains a conditional use under the proposed amendment that has been discussed a bit as well. And ultimately, the Planning Commission did discuss this amendment last week at its meeting and recommends that the city council adopted as proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Director Dillard. Before going to any motion on this item, is there any counselor that wishes to be recognized for questions or feedback? Yep, Counselor McKnight?
Thank you, Director Dillard. I am a little confused, because I thought that there was a request coming through from the folks interested in building the center that we send this back for further consideration and amend and change the conditional to permitted. But are you now saying that we're all okay with the conditional?
No, no. So the amendment as warned for the public hearing does propose that it is a conditional use. I understand that there has been a request by Higher Ground, this particular performing arts center operator, to explore whether it could be made a permitted use. And so if the motion is to send it back to the ordinance committee, that would be, I think, the topic of discussion, and would need to be discussed there and then brought back forward with a new recommendation, I believe. But yeah, that is, that is it. There was a discussion at the ordinance committee a bit about whether this should be conditional or permitted. The Planning Commission discussed that as well. I think the ordinance committee, you know, the discussion there really hinged on the conditional use process as being an additional layer of engagement, and one that could apply standards related to noise ordinances and those sorts of things. Others, though, noted that the performing arts center use is an allowed use as of right in the South End Innovation District, so a mere, you know, 100 feet or so away. And so the policy rationale wasn't exactly clear to everybody. So I'd welcome discussion about this at the ordinance committee. I do feel, though, that up to now, the process has really taken as a given that the use is conditional, and I think that to change it right now to permitted without having some more opportunity for engagement and public feedback might not be the best case.
Thank you. Yeah, I am definitely not comfortable changing it to permitted here. I'm not sure if I would be comfortable at all, but we certainly need that public input. And before we make a motion on this, I think let's give, can we give others a chance to ask their questions?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor McKnight. So is there any other counselor that has questions or wishes to be recognized on this item? Counselor Newbezer?
For the uninitiated, can you give me the layman's on permitted versus conditional, so that it's more clear?
Yeah, so conditional use has an additional layer of review. It would go to the Development Review Board. There are explicit standards in Article III of the zoning ordinance. There's five, six, six conditional use review standards that the DRB can consider. The ordinance committee discussion really focused on numbers three and four. Three states that, you know, the DRB should only grant approval to a project if it will not have, quote, "nuisance impacts from noise," odor, dust, heat, and vibrations greater than typically generated. So noise was really the focus there. And that the, number four is that the transportation system is capable of supporting the proposed use in addition to the existing uses in the area, and it goes on to further elaborate on that. So it's really the DRB reviewing a project on a case-by-case basis to make sure that these conditions are being met. That's, I hope, the layman's term review of that.
No, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I'll, I mean, I'll leave it, I'll leave it to the committee, because they've worked on it more and have more context, but is there any, by delaying this or throwing it back to committee tonight, is there any negative impact or potential negative impact on getting Higher Ground to come? Because I guess I don't want to, like, add in any sort of delay if it's gonna--
Not that I'm aware of. I think most of the delay is coming from external factors at this point.
Sweet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. I will note the time is 10:31 p.m., and as mentioned earlier, I would invite a motion to suspend our rules--
I'd like to make a motion.
Counselor Litwin?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to suspend our rules not to complete the full deliberative agenda, but to complete through 8.4, and to take up the Battery Street scoping study at another time, since that is not moving forward anytime soon.
Okay. I will note that our, so there's a motion by Counselor Litwin. Is there a second to that motion? All right, there's, there's no second to the motion, so without that, the motion does not move forward. We cannot move forward, though, without suspending our rules. Yeah, Counselor Newbezer?
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules to finish the remainder of the deliberative, noting that 8.6 has already been delayed.
Correct. Is there a second, that's seconded by Counselor Broderick. I don't believe suspending our rules is debatable. Is that correct, City Attorney Brown? We've been over this, right? It's not debatable, so we'll just, well, if it was debatable, is there any counselor that would want to be heard on it? All right. So either way, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of the motion to suspend our rules to complete or deliver agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, so, so, well, we're not done yet.
Oh, no.
We're still on item 8.3.
So I would make a--
So, sorry, just one moment here. Is there any other counselor that wishes to be recognized on this item? All right. So I'm going to turn back to Counselor McKnight, then, for a motion.
Thank you. So I move to adopt the ordinance as amended by the ordinance committee.
And I would second.
Okay. There's a motion made by Counselor McKnight, seconded by Counselor Bergman. Is there any other counselor that wishes to be recognized on this?
Here.
Yep, Counselor Bergman.
There were real issues related to parking and noise that we determined would be appropriate to deal with in the conditional use process, and there were lots of opportunities to do that. Making it a permitted use just because it is going to be permitted in the South End Innovation District, which is actually totally unbuilt now, and when it is built, is going to have all sorts of built-in protections for the neighborhood, does not make sense from a time management of the ordinance committee right now. I would be very happy to entertain it if I'm on the ordinance committee, and to deal with that when it comes. But right now, I think that it's appropriate for us to get this in place, to have it be part of a planning process that starts to seriously look at transportation demand management, like we talked about, for such a thing. And I hope that we just adopt this and move forward, and if we need to take the next step, we can and should, and I believe will.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. I don't have any other counselors in the queue, and so we will then go to a vote. The vote is on waiving the reading and adopting the ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously, noting Counselor Schacter's recusal. So thank you very much. Director Dillard, you are next up as well on item 8.4. I know you may have a presentation.
We do, is it?
Yes.
I didn't see my Zoom pop up to tell me I--
Is it, is it the slides that are posted to Civic Clerk, or do you now have sharing capabilities?
I do now.
Okay. Great. So I know you, and we're joined by Sarah Morgan as well, for your office, have this presentation. I am mindful that the recommended action on this one is definitely to send it to the ordinance committee for additional review, so we know that that work will be ongoing. And after that, that we'll have you back. But certainly want to provide you the opportunity here to provide a summary of what is presented here. Great.
We've only got one of these. Go ahead.
Hi, just for those of you I have not met yet, my name's Sarah Morgan. I'm the senior planner in the Office of City Planning with Charles.
Thanks. All right. So this is Neighborhood Code. This will be the third Neighborhood Code amendment that the city council has seen in the last year. So generally, the Neighborhood Code initiative is Burlington's effort to change and reform our zoning regulations to encourage and facilitate infill development in the residential districts. That is part of the city's overall housing strategy that includes many, many things. It's probably a good time to remind you, if you haven't heard already, that the city's housing target for 2050 is 7,000 units, which is a pace of about 260 units or so a year. For context, we've been building 77 units a year. So we clearly have a lot of work to do if we want to increase supply of all kinds of housing. Neighborhood Code, Part 1, really was the foundation for housing reform, so it established, it eliminated density rules and replaced them with massing standards, so building footprint, number of units per building, allowing second structures on a lot, addressing the sort of fundamental components of what infill, sort of missing middle housing is, if you will. Part 2 clarified some rules, made some technical clarifications. It increased the maximum building footprint in the residential medium district, and made a minor sort of clarification that secondary structures, which are allowed on all lots, have to be behind the principal structure. So Neighborhood Code 2B does a number of things. It provides clarity to the design review process. It addresses accessory dwelling units and impact fees, clarifying mainly that impact fees are not applied to ADUs. But primarily, this ordinance amendment affects, or proposes rules for row houses, which you've probably heard of, pocket neighborhoods, which you probably know of as cottage courts, and planned unit developments, which are quite common in the city and elsewhere, but it's probably not a term you're too familiar with, so we'll walk you through it. There are some related topics to Neighborhood Code that are not being addressed at this time, but nevertheless, we will continue to explore in our ongoing work, namely, our upcoming comprehensive plan. We'll look at commercial uses, non-residential uses in our neighborhoods, parking standards in residential neighborhoods, along with the work that the city is doing on transportation demand management right now. Inclusionary zoning, we have always intended to address affordable housing and inclusionary zoning as it relates to Neighborhood Code. That is work that is forthcoming as we embark on our more comprehensive look at inclusionary zoning. Preserve BTV, which is our Historic Preservation Plan, will look at infill implementation with respect to historic properties. That plan will be starting very soon. I think the contract was approved tonight. The New North End Plan is looking in a detailed way at the New North End, specifically in the open space plan as well. So these are all plans that will inform future housing reform work. So Sarah's going to walk you through just, you know, how we're doing and how Neighborhood Code is being implemented.
Great. Can everyone hear me? Okay. All right, awesome. So-- So it's been almost just over one year since the initial adoption of the Neighborhood Code, Part 1, so we're excited to be able to have a good, a small but strong sample of permits that have been submitted to the Department of Permitting Inspections that have been allowed by the Neighborhood Code. Since the initial adoption of the Neighborhood Code last March, we've had 21 permits come through, and 19 of which are active. Two of those have been withdrawn, and one has been denied just due to timing out and that application expiring. Hopefully, the colors are somewhat easy to see on this slide, but I wanted to provide a slight breakdown of the net change in units, but also provide some caveats with the data. So as mentioned, this is a pretty small sample size, and with this just being one year out, this is not really necessarily intended to draw long-term trends or identify long-term trends on what to expect in the future. This is just a snapshot of this first year. And additionally, when we are referring to the terms net change in units and units approved, just keeping in mind that this is with zoning permits and with no necessarily, it's not necessarily guaranteed to be built. So with that being said, just want to highlight that the, oh, just, yeah, I want to highlight that there are, you do see the, a more, you see more net change in units in the residential low and medium districts. I do want to, I just want to point out that this was initially the intent of Neighborhood Code Part 1. It was this smaller-scale infill in our residential low and residential medium districts. So we're excited to see the, that success there and see that, the amendment reflected in the following, the follow-up data. So related to the implementation of projects, this provides a, just a kind of high-level breakdown of the proposed net change in units by that project type. We worked with our senior data analyst Nancy Stetson, as well as the Department of Permitting Inspections, to really have a better sense of what these 21, what these 21 permits are saying, or like what they are proposing. So really, we're seeing more conversion of existing structures. We're seeing a lot of projects that are adding one unit, and these typically are conversions of existing structures, such as garages, attic spaces, or additions of one unit to existing multifamily structures. And the available data does show that 36 units that are in that approval or pending stage, 14 of those are one bedrooms. Just one note with that is that the approval, those that are submitted for that one bedroom are usually on the same project as those that are up to three to four bedrooms as well. And finally, four of the 19 active permits involve secondary structures, and two of those four will be converted sheds or garages. So, oh, yeah. Diving kind of into what we're looking at in this final amendment, unless there's any specific questions so far, but moving into what we're proposing as part of the Neighborhood Code Part 2B, the first of the new standards are the pocket neighborhoods, more commonly referred to as cottage courts. These are groups of small detached houses or two-unit attached houses that share a common area. You'll see these often referred to when having discussions about the promotion of interactive interaction between community members and residents while still sustaining a level of privacy. You can see what they look like, sorry. Right here, you can see that in our proposed standards, we see that the common area in that center is required as part of these standards, minimum project size being 4,000 square feet. There also is an allowance for common buildings due to the small size of the structures that are usually in these pocket neighborhoods. These are often used for community meeting spaces, utility rooms, laundry rooms, et cetera. Given the urban fabric of Burlington, we also are allowing for principal structures, which might be an existing home on the site of the pocket neighborhoods, and also noting that parking areas are typically, parking areas in pocket neighborhoods should be consolidated, provided that they meet other development standards elsewhere in the ordinance. So again, high-level view of what pocket neighborhoods are, and again, our standards being these minimum lot sizes of 4,000 square feet. The minimum number of homes in pocket neighborhoods and maximum being three units, three homes minimum with a maximum of 12 units. We have that maximum of 12 units really to, recommended to sustain that small pocket neighborhood feeling and, again, coincide with that design for interaction between small neighborhoods, and again, common area standards ensuring that usability and accessibility.
All right. So row houses, more common, you probably know more about these. So one thing the amendment does, though, is creates the pathway for fee simple row houses. Fee simple row houses are the most desirable kind of sort of attached or row house type of development. It's where you own the land under your house, including typically a yard. For that reason, they're more desirable in other communities. The other model is a condominium model where you own the building, but otherwise, the land is owned under common ownership. And you can imagine why, if you live in a row house development of, let's say, eight row houses, you might want to just own your own yard. This is, this is the case elsewhere, and we think it will be the case here as well. So this, this amendment does create the pathway for fee simple townhouses. Other benefits, row houses are smaller, they have attached walls, so they have, tend to have lower construction cost per unit, and reduce energy use and costs because of that sort of attached nature. They use land efficiently. They typically contain three or more bedrooms, so this is a housing option that could make a dent in our need for family-sized units, and they can be arranged to meet a range of lot sizes and conditions. And so again, the lots can be as narrow as 16 feet in this proposal. We require that, you know, you can have 10 connected or attached row houses, but after the, after the 10th, you need to have a break between the buildings to provide some sort of gaps for light air, other things, activity. Notably, in this diagram, you see that there's a rear alleyway, so we're requiring that vehicular access be required, be provided only through a rear alley or a rear drive. Only in cases where there's just two attached row houses can there be one curb cut for those two, otherwise, we're really trying to limit curb cuts to increase pedestrian safety and to make our neighborhoods more bikeable and walkable. We are making, making it possible to develop row houses perpendicular to the street. Traditionally, you'll see row houses parallel to the street. We have a great historic example at the corner of Union and College Street, if you want to walk up the street and see those. It's a great example of a Burlington row house, but in some cases, row houses can be perpendicular to the street, so we do make rules for that. Otherwise, though, you know, they still require that sort of rear alley access, there's no specific rules to facilitate those. So again, you know, won't go over this, but 900-square-foot footprint limit gets to the point that these row houses tend to be narrow but taller, so the height is a little bit, the maximum height is a little bit taller than the underlying Neighborhood Code. We are proposing that you can have a secondary structure or a second unit in a row house project. Plan unit developments are currently allowed in the, in the RL, the residential low and residential medium districts, but not yet in the RC district. We just haven't written those rules yet. That's what's happening here. But PUDs generally offer larger properties in our city, the opportunity to be developed flexibly and, but in a way that is contextual. They do promote an appropriate and efficient use of land, they offer, they offer opportunities for creativity. The proposed rules limit larger buildings to the projects of three-plus acres, and PUDs encourage a mix of building types, which facilitate a mix of bedroom, a mix of units in terms of bedroom count, and so, and so we think this is another way that we can tackle many of our specific housing needs in one type of development. So much like our general approach, we are regulating, Matt, the sort of intensity through floor area ratio, which is a technical term that is all really about, a ratio of the built area to the land area. Only PUDs of three-plus acres, again, can have these larger buildings of 15,000 square feet in footprint. Setback rules are the same for the underlying Neighborhood Code. We're not, we're not proposing that these larger PUDs have smaller setbacks or anything. We think these projects do need to be contextual, and so the rules are here. We'll get into the nitty-gritty with the ordinance committee on this, but I just wanted to sort of share with you that, if I can take one point from this, is that we, we really talked a lot about building footprint size in that sort of main 0.5 acre to 2.99 acre PUD site. We think those are going to be the most numerous, and we limited the building footprint to 5,000 square feet because those building types tend to facilitate and accommodate family-sized units. You can typically get four units on a floor, and if you can get four on a floor, those are probably going to be somewhere between, you know, 900 and 1,200 square feet, which is pretty good for a three-bedroom unit. Just, just want to conclude here on building size, because I know this is probably, you know, may have been shocking, thinking about buildings with 15,000 square footprint in our residential neighborhoods, but we've actually got examples where, of much larger buildings in our residential districts. So the Heineberg Senior Housing has a footprint of 24,000 square feet and fits quite nicely into the New North End. Very close by, Thayer Commons has buildings ranging from 8,000 to 25,000, and seems to coexist quite harmoniously with the neighborhood. And so we, we think, and I think the planning commission's unanimous support of this sets a pathway for further sort of intensification and infill development, hopefully helping us reach that 7,000-unit target. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Charles and Sarah, for your presentation on this, and really all your work over the years on the Neighborhood Code. Before we go to a motion on this, we'll go to councillor, questions and comments, and councillor Litwin, I saw your hand first, and then we'll go to councillor Carpenter.
Yeah, it's actually just a quick question. Increasingly, the topic of tiny homes has been coming up in, in my NPA and in other spaces' emails, and it looked like, and please address this if I'm not accurate, but in several of the options, like the cottage court option, and maybe the option that you presented immediately after that, there wouldn't be any minimum structure square footage. So am I, am I reading this correctly, that this would potentially be something that could be used for tiny home communities? And if not, can we explore this so that we can create that option?
We can certainly explore that. We didn't look very closely into tiny homes in this amendment. There's nothing other than the Minimum Housing Code, which establishes a minimum unit size that would preclude anyone from doing a tiny house community. There are specific issues to tiny houses, and especially in terms of building types, that one would want to allow. Having written tiny home ordinances in another community, we need, we would need to address whether or not we would want to allow HUD manufactured homes or continue to allow them in our, in our neighborhoods. Do they need, can they be on wheels? Many folks who have tiny homes have them on wheels and like to move them around. Do they need a solid foundation? How do we hook them up to utilities and that sort of thing? And there are some really complex questions that we didn't have time to answer, but yes, this cottage court example could consist of very small footprint homes, tiny homes.
And so then, in the, correct me about the process, but in the ordinance committee, could this be something that's worked out? Because I just think that this is an option that, as a city, we do need to really explore. We talked about the missing middle here. What we're, what we're not talking about are the people who are just above sort of what qualifies them for supportive housing and not part of the middle, and that is growing, unfortunately. And so there's just an increased need for, for this style of housing. I'd love to work out those details in a process, like about wheels versus not wheels and so forth, but I just think if we're going to advance, continue to advance Neighborhood Code, which I think is great, and is going to transform Burlington over the next half century, hopefully, if tariffs don't get in the way, we just have to be able to have some options for folks. And there are organizations that would love to probably be able to provide tiny homes to folks that are currently unhoused or are at risk of being unhoused, and to be able to, communities have been very successful across the country in housing veterans and other folks in tiny house situations. I'd like to see Burlington move in that direction.
Thank you, councillor Litwin. Councillor Carpenter?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, and not so much tiny house communities, but it got brought up earlier, the issue that 350 square feet is our minimum house size. And so I really do, even with existing single-family lots, I think there's a lot of folks who might want a dwelling smaller than 350 square feet in just one unit at a time. So I would encourage us to look at that. ADUs, is there any discussion about the current ADUs that require homeowner occupancy and whether they now could convert to fee simple ownership?
ADUs converting to fee simple?
The requirement that they be owner, not owner occup, yeah, owner, on a lot with an owner, basically. Isn't that the requirement, the old requirement?
Yeah, they, no longer are required to be...
That's no longer required?
Yeah.
So you could, is there a process to convert that to a fee simple duplex or whatever we want?
The changes that are made in this amendment are really a carryover from the initial CA 2404.
Yeah.
And in that one, the intent for changing the accessory dwelling unit standards was mainly to reconcile the secondary structure standards with that of the accessory dwelling unit standards. So not necess, it was mainly for the intent to streamline and simplify by allowing for these, the same benefits of having an ADU on an owner-occupied structure, though just having them in one location. So through streamlining, with it, with it being more streamlined, instead of really revisiting the owner occupancy piece, that's, those are the changes that were proposed. Does that, and so it doesn't necess, we weren't, we aren't necessarily proposing that in this, and it wasn't necessarily discussed at the planning commission to, to requi, sorry. The planning, the standards don't require that of ADUs because we now have the secondary structure option, but the ADU standards that you see changed in this are for the purposes of street mining.
Because, if you own an ADU now, you built it several years ago, can you convert it to a fee simple duplex or duplex?
So you're talking specifically about an attached ADU?
Or not.
Well, if, so, no. If you're asking if I have a, if someone has a detached ADU, could they subdivide their lot to create two lots, one of which has the former ADU now as a fee simple primary structure?
Yes.
We didn't create those rules, we have not. We have always intended to address flag lots, which is typically the way that cities allow for the creation of fee simple second homes. Primarily, those rules are done to make it easier to access financing. It can be almost impossible to get financing to build an ADU or a second home, and so one way that cities facilitate that is to say, okay, we will let you subdivide a flag lot on your property, and then the bank will see that as a fee simple lot, and they'll extend financing to you. But we don't have those rules in place today, and we, we can address them and have always planned on addressing them in a forthcoming amendment.
And the other requirement is, is on the lot of homeowner occupancy, and whether that would drop away?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
So you've built an ADU, the requirement of the zoning was that you, it's, the main dwelling is owner-occupied. Can you convert that now to a duplex?
That is a conversation that we had with the, with the zoning division, and mainly just because there are such rigorous requirements for that ADU, and that this amendment, we did not want to dive into what it was. In that, this amendment, we did not want to dive into what it would mean for DPI to have to go in and then kind of undo some of those requirements and kind of build that internal system quite yet. It is, but it's definitely something that we have talked about and would like to look into for further amendments. But, you know, just with the existing, with those existing requirements, how can we internally and how can we, through our permitting process, kind of retroactively make those changes is something that needs to be discussed, too.
Okay, it's not a hot issue, but it's, because we will now be allowing next door another type of, you know, and so it just creates some inequity down the road.
I think if we could move on to the next councillor, that would be great. Thank, we're at time here. Is there something you immediately need to respond? Sorry?
No, I just, on the PUD, there was a conversation?
Councillor Carpenter, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're at time now, yeah. Director Dillard, was there, you had the mic there. I want, okay, all right. I have councillor Broderick in the queue. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Councillor Newbezer, and then hopefully we can go to a vote. Councillor Broderick?
Thank you. I had questions about, in regards to residential corridor. I was wondering if you guys had any theories, I guess, for the low adoption amount of the new residential corridor districts or zones?
Yeah, sure. So I think a lot of these projects are from pent-up demand, people probably waiting for a few years to do a project, people who owned a project, maybe they're already small-scale infill developers or landlords looking to add units to their property. The corridors here in this darkest red, so North Avenue, parts of Colchester, St. Paul, Shelburne, Pearl Street, you can only have one building in the residential corridor. That is a big difference between the corridor and the RL and the RM. You can have a larger building, but you can only have one. And so in theory, a lot of those property owners in these corridors would have to either propose a large addition to an existing home or demolish that structure to build one that meets, that is built up to that maximum footprint. And I think that has a lot to do with why we're seeing that. It's something we're going to continue to explore. If we're seeing continued demand for these secondary units as the primary way that we're getting infill development, we may want to explore whether or not the RSC should have the ability to have a second unit, maybe also adjusting down the maximum footprint, if that's the idea. But I think that's the case. I think the other expectation of ours is that the New North End is going to be the area of town where we might see the greatest amount of uptake in the neighborhood code. And we're doing the New North End planning process right now, and I think a lot of people are just becoming familiar with a lot of these zoning codes, and we're doing a lot of education. And I think the third piece to the answer is that I think generally, there's just not a lot of education about these new rules. We don't really have a big ecosystem of small-scale developers in Burlington or even in Vermont. So that's work that I think the administration is interested in pursuing. We have Burlington and South Burlington, Winuski and Essex Junction have submitted an application for a grant from CCRPC to explore education and outreach, including exploring pre-approved building plans for buildings. And so that might increase uptake of these homes.
One brief addition is that in the planning and development standards, that you'll see that there, for any other, for the RM and RL district, you'll see two tiers. However, on the residential corridor, you'll see an initial tier for less than a half-acre, and that is intentionally also to address that, the owner's ability to add a secondary structure as well in residential corridor specifically.
Thank you for that. And then I lastly had, I didn't really get a full look at what your timeline, what the stuff you're tackling this year is. I think that was like one of your first slides. But I was wondering if there was any considerations of exploring, especially in places like the New North End. But I think this would be good at most places, especially in those corridors of exploring, creating mixed-use development. And, I mean, I don't want to, I have one minute, so I can't really explain why I love mixed-use development, but yeah.
Yeah, so part one, neighborhood code created the ability for some commercial uses in the residential corridor. There are, so cafes, bars, neighborhood commercial uses, the sort of typical ones you might see in a neighborhood. Those are allowed in the RC district. When we're going to look in the comp plan and the New North End plan at other non-residential uses that we might, the community might want to see in the residential neighborhoods?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Broderick. Councillor Newbezer and then councillor McKnight will turn to you for a motion.
Just one thing really quickly, could you just go back to the slide that I think mentioned inclusionary zoning and future conversations with planning? Yeah. I'm sorry, my eyesight's getting so bad. So is that that second IZ amendment piece, you're talking about a future conversation around if you have two units and you're going to build three, it's not going to hit under IZ, but this would have a conversation about total units on a lot? Am I reading it right?
The second bullet?
Uh...
The first bullet?
First under IZ.
Okay, yeah, the first one under IZ. The rules in the code, read strictly, say that five units in a single structure is the trigger for IZ. We've seen some projects with more than five units total but spread across a number of structures, and so I think that's one of the issues that we'll explore. So that's what that's about.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to highlight it for my colleagues because I think this is, was one of the biggest objections that I had to neighborhood code at the time, it was the meeting before council, but I think this is sort of a loophole we've allowed to go unaddressed. And so I'm glad that you all are taking it up, and I think it's really important that we move on that. So I look forward to future updates. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Newbezer. Councillor McKnight, could we turn to you for a motion on the item?
Yes, I move to waive the reading and refer to the ordinance committee.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, councillor Bergman. Is there any other commentary on this motion? All right, seeing none, again, with thanks to you, director Dillard and Sarah Morgan and your office on this item. We'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. So we have one final item on our delivery of agenda this evening, and it's item 8.5, Battery Street Scoping Study Preferred Alternative Approval. And director Spencer, thank you to you and the whole team here for your patience at this late hour on this important work as well. And director Spencer, could I turn to you to introduce the team?
Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, I will introduce the team. We have Drew, our consultant, we have Jason from the RPC and Julia Ursach, our public works engineer. I just wanted to kick off by saying that these corridor studies are really powerful planning tools for us working with other departments, such as the Office of City Planning, in doing the long-term planning for our corridors and our communities. And I am pleased with the engagement we had here with the community and have come up with a recommendation that not only was approved by the advisory committee, but also supported by the DPW Commission and the Transportation Energy Utilities Committee. So with that, I'll pass it on over.
Last name Gingras, G-I-N-G-R-A-S?
If, I think Catherine has the share abilities here. Catherine, if you're still on, if you could give Drew?
Ben, she's not.
Oh, is it you, Lauren?
So am I supposed to hit?
Yeah, if you could, if you could give Drew share screen.
On the participant list here. Yeah, I have my hand raised to hopefully make it more apparent. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have share screen ability now?
One moment and I will, no, yes, I do. Thank you. Should be sharing. It does say on my screen that I-
Yeah, I see it on my screen.
Oh, okay.
It's, so for, I think if we could change the view for here in City Hall, we should be able to get it.
Oh, it's, currently looks like it's selected as Charles' screen. I don't know.
Yeah, hold on.
If you click Drew Gingras', there we go.
There we go.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
In the interest of time, I have abbreviated our presentation, but I promise it is still thorough, but just to express thank you all for your patience this evening and in the interest of time, I am going to be as efficient. Thank you, director Spencer, for introducing the project. So just a quick overview, this is the Battery Street Corridor Scoping Study. This is looking at kind of re-envisioning Battery Street as a complete street between Maple Street and Sherman Street to the north, where Battery becomes Park. I'm going to use a quick look at the agenda that I'm going to rapidly get through. Again, in the interest of time, I've struck the additional analysis and refinements. Our intention tonight is to present to you the preferred alternative just after a brief project overview. So, project team, my name is Drew Gingras. I'm with VHB, the consultant engineering and planning team hired by the CCRPC in the city to undertake this study. I'm joined to my right by Jason Jarest and Julia Ursach, and we've been supported by the names on the screen. Brief overview, the project purpose. The intended purpose of this study is to identify and prioritize short and long-term improvements that provide equitable, safe, low-stress, and accessible transportation for all along Battery Street, regardless of age, ability, or mode of travel. The identified project needs early on that were supported by the advisory committee and informed by the public include improving corridor intersection safety for all users, enhancing comfort and accessibility for pedestrians, providing end-to-end bicycle facilities and connections, integrating street ecology, and providing acceptable mobility for all modes of transportation along Battery Street. We had a pretty robust community engagement process. We had two public meetings, both held in this very room. We had four advisory committee meetings with our very involved advisory committee. We had 10 targeted outreach events, inclusive of TCB. We had a very successful online survey mapping tool, and we've gone to the Tuuk twice, as well as the Public Works Commission, both groups of which unanimously supported our recommended preferred alternative. The key takeaways from our study really echoed what we saw and what was defined in the purpose, that we need to make Battery Street a more complete and more safer, more accessible, and more inviting gateway street for our city, understanding it is the western border of our city grid, and it is a very critical commuter route and one that a lot of folks would much prefer to more safely walk and bike along while being sensitive to the current land uses, contexts, and commuting nature of the street. So as with any corridor study, we embark on an exploration of different options to improve the street. Again, in the interest of time, I'm going to go through these fairly rapidly, but welcome any questions at its conclusion. We looked at two alternatives for the corridor from end to end. They're shown at a higher scale. On the bottom here, these are shown in much more detail in the report that was included in the council meeting packet. But the key differentiator between alternatives one and two that we investigated was the nature of the bicycle facility, understanding there are several consistencies between the alternatives, namely, and how pedestrians are handled. But the bike facility and the implications therein are really the key differentiator between the two. Alternative one, we'll say, is kind of the usual, so to speak, when you imagine bicycle facilities along a street, you have one on both sides, operating parallel with the direction of travel. The second alternative that was looked at is what you see here on the right side of the screen, more emblematic of a shared-use path, but understanding it's intended to be an exclusive bicycle facility, encouraging two-way parallel operation between bicyclists. What we heard when we looked at each of these alternatives was concern over impacts to traffic operations, i.e., how long it takes to get through an intersection or get from end to end along the corridor. Does one alternative impact this more than the other? Obviously, as this council well knows, any times you're talking about reallocating space on the street, there must be sensitivity given to the impacts on street parking. Concern over pedestrian crossings on the route, namely at College Street, that crossing to get down to the waterfront is extremely popular. It's also at, you know, the bottom of a hill that has known speeding issues, safety concerns among the facilities, and then just overall kind of long-term maintenance. All this concluded in the desire to investigate a third alternative, seeing how there was still not quite unanimous support, particularly among our advisory committee, for either alternative. So we looked at a third alternative that kind of combined the best, so to speak, of each option, and we investigated this in detail with the advisory committee, reviewed it in detail, and ultimately developed this evaluation matrix that you see on the screen here, comparing alternatives one, two, and three. Alternative two ended up being our recommended preferred alternative. Believe the intention of us being here tonight is to not only present to you the findings, but to seek support of alternative two as the recommended preferred alternative. Here once more is a high-level look at what that alternative looks like, just to provide a bit more detail. It's a west-side, two-way separated bike facility, completely separated from Battery Street's roadway and elevated to what's considered sidewalk grade, so bicyclists would operate at the same level of the roadway as pedestrians. The area that I chopped out of this presentation, again, in the interest of time, was providing a little bit more detail on additional analyses that were performed based on feedback we heard, both from our advisory committee, from the Tuuk, and from that continued community engagement. These sensitivities included, namely, being sensitive to the current allocation of on-street parking in the southern end, south of Main Street. We were able to maintain over 90% of the parking spaces down there while still meeting the, all the other stated purpose and needs, purposes and needs of the project. And this alternative represents the best ability to maintain that parking all the while meeting those needs. Additionally, it creates significant opportunity to expand streetscaping opportunities in green space, to be mindful of stormwater management mitigation to lessen the load on the combined sewer and storm system, which is a particular sensitivity, this proximate to Lake Champlain. So this was by far, by far and above what we thought should be our team's recommended preferred alternative. Again, the Tuuk and the DPW Commission unanimously agreed with supporting this as the recommendation for the project. It best meets the purpose and need. It has the greatest amount of public support. It was endorsed by our advisory committee. It minimizes impacts to delay for all modes, in particular, those commuters as well. And it frankly, at least from an analytical level, represents the safest option among those considered. So with that, hopefully that wasn't too quick, but I'd welcome any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation, all the work leading up to tonight. And again, let me repeat for your patience being here at this late hour. Before opening it up to the floor, councillor Barlow, as mentioned in the presentation, I know this comes to us with the unanimous approval of the Tuuk this last council year, you, councillor Litwin, councillor Bergman, councillor Broderick. Could I turn to you for a motion on the item first, councillors?
Certainly. I move to approve the Battery Street Scoping Study Project Advisory Committee's selection of revised alternative two as the preferred alternative for this study, and further recommends that the Department of Public Works reviews the curb cut along the entire corridor to further enhance bicycle and pedestrian safety during the future phases of this project. And just ask for the floor back briefly for a second, after a second.
Thank you. I have a second from councillor Litwin and councillor Barlow. The floor is yours.
And I just wanted to express my appreciation for the process that was used, you know, and I was particularly struck by how we were able to get consensus from some of the folks who are most concerned about parking, the loss of on-street- who were most concerned about parking, the loss of on-street parking, and how you were able to accommodate those concerns and maintain, as you said, over 90% of that parking. So it's a win-win all the way around the street, it'll be a lot safer, should we be able to build, build this infrastructure, and we'll also be able to park the vehicles that'll continue to want to park there. So thank you for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barlow. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Councillor Carpenter?
Just a clarification, you're going to put the bike lanes on the west side of Battery, and beyond that, there'll still be pedestrian access. Will that be redesigned in any way? It's not great from an accessibility scope point of view, and.
That, that certainly, the, the general topography and geography of the area presents challenges there, but I think there are some opportunities to absolutely improve accessibility for pedestrians, and those, those areas would be maintained and widened where feasible, particularly around the, the area of April Cornell and that College Street intersection, recognizing the challenges there. That would all be in the preliminary engineering phase, but it would certainly be, it's spoken to in the report, that accessibility is going to be a key concern moving, moving the project into design.
Great, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter. Councillor Newbezer?
And just the two-way, because my eyesight's poor, two-way bike lanes all the way to the length along that?
Correct, yeah.
Yep, separated. Well, just thank you so much, because I don't know how many public meetings I've been in, where we've been yelling about getting two-way bike lanes, and I think this is a huge step in the right direction, and deeply appreciate that this is the direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Newbezer. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized? All right. Seeing none, then we will go to a vote on councillor Barlow's motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So thank you very much for being here this evening. That does bring us to the end of our deliberative agenda, which is what we were permitted to do in suspending our rules. So with nothing else to do, we will adjourn the city council meeting at 11:22 PM. My thanks to Lori Olberg, Town Meeting TV, and those keeping City Hall open for us late, of course, to all of you as well. We will meet again on April 28th. Thank you very much.